Yes, welcome everybody, board members, staff and members of the public to the Open Space Board of Trustees Meeting of October 13th, 2021. We customarily start the meeting by calling the role of board members. I do have Karen Holwick at the top of my list.
Hal, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
I can hear Hal. David, I think it's just you. We can hear Hal.
Okay. And I was just saying Karen is having a little bit of a technical difficulty. So I'm going to start calling the members who are live with us. Do we have?
Yeah, we still can't hear you.
Dave, can you?
Okay, the problem's on Dave's end. See if I can text them in the meantime.
So we're going to try and call the role. Caroline Miller, are you present? Michelle Estrella?
Here.
Dave Kuntz, can you hear me? Are you present? Okay, forgive us folks, give us a couple of moments to try and get the board in order. Perhaps while that's going on, I'll return to this item in order to keep efficiency up. I'd like to ask Allison Eklund to perhaps give us the presentation on the rules and procedure for City of Boulder meetings.
Hey Hal, can I just jump in real quick and say when I logged in, I've never experienced this before on Zoom. There was a good solid minute that I couldn't hear anyone as well. So I was fiddling with my computer and it was silent and then now I'm good. But but my computer also glitched a little at the beginning.
Okay, thank you for that. Perhaps we could text Dave and Karen to attempt to leave and come back or chat them while Allison gives the presentation.
Thank you for joining us tonight. In order to strike a balance between meaningful transparent engagement and online security, the following rules will be applied to this meeting. This meeting has been called to conduct the business of the City of Boulder. Activities that disrupt, delay, or interfere with the meeting are prohibited. The time for speaking or asking questions may be limited. And no person shall speak except when recognized by the person presiding. And no person shall speak for longer than the time allotted. Each person shall register to speak at the meeting using that person's real name. Any person believed to be using a pseudonym will not be permitted to speak at the meeting. So if you come on with just a phone number or Tom's iPad, for example, you'll be asked to rename yourself with your full name. Or you can send a chat message to me and I can rename for you. No video will be permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers and presenters. All others will participate by voice only. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce these rules by muting anyone who violates any rule. The chat function will be enabled to me for Zoom and technical related questions only. No content questions, please. And only the host and individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share their screen during this meeting. We do have some public comment speakers signed up in advance. But if when we get to that portion of the meeting, if you want to raise your hand to get in line to speak, you can find the hand button either in the participants box right there. Or sometimes people are also finding it under their reactions icon at the bottom of their screen. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Allison. Dave, I see you're back. Can you hear me now? And can you affirm your presence here at the meeting?
I am present and I can hear you and everyone else.
Wonderful. And I did see a phone number come back in. Do we have Karen via the phone? If so, she is on mute. I don't recognize the 703 number as Karen personally.
No, that is her number.
Oh, that is. Okay, so Karen, if you can hear me, you appear to be on mute. I'm going to attempt to unmute you. Really, you're off mute now, maybe?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Now that I can hear you, you're affirming you are present at the meeting. Great, we have all five of the board members present. So we can let the record show, we are set to proceed. As we always start our meetings out, we're going to bring up the minutes from our prior meeting for approval. I ask members of public, be patient with us. Normally, we've been very good at this. We're just having a rough launch, but I feel like we're going to get the technical glitches resolved. So starting on the first page for the minutes of September 8th, 2021, does anybody have any issues or adjustments? Great, we can see Karen again. So if there are no issues and adjustments on page one, we can turn our attention to the second page. Does anybody have any issues on the second page? Great, seeing none. We have, I think, our first unedited set of minutes that we've seen. I'm very pleased about that. And so I will ask, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting?
So moved.
Great, I will second and we can call the role. Karen Holwick. Um, okay, we're, we're, we're seeing her motioning. I think she's approving. Give me a thumbs up if you approve, if you would. We cannot hear Karen, unfortunately.
Karen, you should be able to unmute now.
Okay, can you hear me now? Thank you. I just got permission to unmute. Thank you. And I'm, yes.
Great. Dave Kuntz, do you approve?
Yes.
Caroline Miller?
Yes.
And Michelle Estrella? And I also approve, so we have a unanimous motion to approve the prior minutes. With that, I would like to turn the meeting back over to Allison. We see we have a number of members from the public and we're going to enter into a public comment. This is a public comment for items that are not identified for public hearing tonight. The public hearing has to do with the extinguishment of a 60-foot wide, non-exclusive easement in the Castler Open Space property it's being referred to here. So we are going to have a special comment section for that item. Anything else on the agenda is great for open comment. So we will start there.
Okay, first on this, on the pre-meeting signup list was Jim Morris. Jim, are you, I'm not seeing a Jim Morris on yet, though. Jim, are you on under a different name? Or we have Amy Semel. So Amy. Okay, I'm going to ask, we're going to have to turn your video off.
Okay.
And let me get your three minutes ready. Okay, so go ahead and unmute yourself. Start with your name and then we'll start your three minutes.
Okay. Hi there, my name is Amy Semel. That's my dog in the background. Sorry if she whines. I live at 1233 Aitkins Way. I am speaking tonight to encourage you to continue to uphold your charter. Dispose of precious land for mitigation. And to do so would be a grave and irreversible mistake. Your charter states that one purpose of open space is the preservation or restoration of natural areas, including flora or fauna that are unusual, spectacular, or unique, or that represent outstanding or rare examples of man's species. Pre-bulls jumping mice and lady's tresses are clear examples of such, as is rare Tall Grass Prairie. Two other purposes of open space as defined by the charter are utilization of land for shaping the development of the city, limiting urban sprawl, and disciplining growth. And also utilization of land to prevent encroachment on a floodplain. The charter is also clear on the importance of residents having a voice in any possible land disposal. As you know, grassroots efforts are underway in our neighborhoods right now, resisting what many see as an impending ecological disaster at CU South. Though a vote has not yet been had, I urge you to view the thousands of signatures already collected on ballot measure 302 and also on the referendum petition as a bellwether for how citizens would view a vote to dispose. Please let your legacy be that of standing strong. Poorly planned attempts to mitigate the effects of climate change do not justify disregarding our collective environmental values. Please let democracy run its course. Thank you for all you do for our beautiful open space lands.
Okay, next up we have Frances Harto. And on deck will be Mike Browning if Mike is on. Okay, yeah, so Frances, you can unmute yourself now.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me? First, I would like to thank the trustees for their service. As a former trustee, I know the amount of work that goes into what you do and it's very much appreciated. Part of what you worked on so hard this summer was to draft and pass a resolution regarding what the city needed to do in order to come before you with a request for disposal of open space land adjacent to CU South that would be protective of adjacent open space and state natural area lands. Unfortunately, in negotiating the annexation agreement and in passing it on an emergency basis, council elected to ignore the trustees' resolution. I would urge the trustees to work to enforce the terms of the resolution by reminding council and OSMP staff that the terms do have to be met before you will consider a disposal. Now, on a completely separate topic that's on your agenda, I was so pleased to see that the Voice and Sight program for bringing your dog onto the trails is under consideration. As someone who is fortunate to live on the edge of open space and use open space daily, I can tell you that Voice and Sight is not running the way that it was supposed to be when we designed it when I was a trustee. It was supposed to operate on a honor basis, but people just need guidance on what it means to have your dog under Voice and Sight. A dog that is 200 yards off trail that you can call back with your radio collar is not a voice that's under, not a dog under Voice and Sight. A dog that is behind you is not a dog under Voice and Sight. A dog that you're running with at night, which we see a lot of people with head labs on the trails now, is not a dog under Voice and Sight. So I am so glad to see that you're reevaluating this incredible amenity of a program. And I would urge you just to firm up what it means to have your dog under Voice and Sight. A 56% compliance rate is not a successful program. And I think people, nobody wants to hurt the open space. They just kind of need to know what we meant, which was to have your dog in front of you within a few feet, leash length, maybe a little farther, but not what we're seeing on the trails. What we used to see on the trails was wildlife. Now we just see people's golden retrievers running through the brush. So thank you so much for working on that and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Frances.
Okay, next up is Mike Browning and on deck will be Raymond Bridge. Mike, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I also want to thank you for your service. You know, it's what makes Boulder great. It's not an easy job and you guys work hard and do a great job. So thank you for your service to the community. I also want to thank you for the work you put in on the July resolution about the terms and conditions under which you'd consider a disposition of the flood wall area on CU South. And as Frances just said, there are some matters, I think, that the annexation agreement failed to adequately comply with the terms of a resolution, particularly on the light and noise impact of stadiums, of a potential stadium there. There, that issue was apparently put off to the future and I don't think that's acceptable. There needs to be some baseline studies done now. And the terms of that noise pollution and light pollution need to be burned up with CU. The annexation agreement or the July resolution also talked about the city open space department and the city utility department entering into intergovernmental agreement to lay out the specifics of the mitigation plan should you agree to continue with the disposition. And those agreements, that intergovernmental agreement is going to take a long time to negotiate. There's a lot of complex provisions in there. And I would just urge you to urge your staff to begin that process right away. I think if you wait a year or two to start that until the annexation is sort of in development is closer at hand, you won't have a time to adequately consider a draft of that IGA. So I just want to urge you to direct your staff to enter into negotiations with the city's utility department to flesh out the terms that are set forth in your July resolution. That's going to take a while to do and you shouldn't be rushed into it. If there's a, you know, a quick disposal resolution and you haven't done that yet. So, you know, please, please direct the staff to take that seriously and to begin the process and negotiating that IGA. So again, thank you for your service and thank you for the July resolution. I think it lays out a roadmap. But now I think you need to drive down that roadmap and make sure there's an adequate agreement covering the mitigation measures that you so wisely put forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, next up is Raymond Bridge. Let me find you in this list. Okay, you can unmute yourself now and I see that Jim Morris has joined us. So Jim, you'll be on deck.
Good evening, trustees. Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm Raymond Bridge. I'm a Boulder resident. I'm speaking on behalf of the Boulder County Audubon Society. We urge the board to oppose the annexation agreement and to remind city council that flood mitigation has been the only justification for annexation. Yet the plan currently being pursued could only proceed if this board approves disposal of approximately five acres of open space. The conditions this board has previously and repeatedly communicated to city council for such a disposal have been ignored. For example, in communications to council on in September 1999 and September 2020, OSBT made it clear that it could only support disposal for a design that would guarantee uninterrupted flow of groundwater to the state natural area in perpetuity. Not only has there been no such plan, even the much touted groundwater study has still not been released. Instead, we have the same vague promises and generalizations in the draft agreement that we heard for the last several years. With regard to the annexation agreement itself, OSBT has repeatedly stated that it is critical that planning ensure that the adjoining open space and the wildlife that relies on it must be protected from excessive noise and lighting, particularly considering that a 3,000-seat sports state facility is planned. The current annexation agreement does not provide any such guarantee. It merely makes some vague gestures about cooperation. The Open Space Board of Trustees should oppose moving forward on this path. Thank you and thank you to the board for your service. Good night.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, Jim Morris, you're up next and Margaret will be on deck.
Hi, I'm Jim Morris. I wanted to sort of say that in some ways I'm motivated by the idea that we need to protect whole ecosystems, endangered species, plus all the other species that rely on them and the humans who rely on them also. The idea of the groundwater being protected and of having answers to what's happening with the groundwater to the Colorado natural area, to the rare species, and just to the whole migratory corridor thing is important to me. Can you guys? One thing that motivates me is when I read bits of poetry, like there's a statement by Lauren Isley that if there's magic in the world, it is contained in water. And Thoreau says, "And wildness is the preservation of the world." And other people say, you know, "When the last race individual of a race of living things breathes no more, another heaven and another earth must pass before such a one can be again." So building sports stadiums and having CU have uncontrolled growth and CU trying to maybe make 100 to $500 million by selling off all this land for real estate development. All of that is really, it's totally against ecosystems and wildlife and nature preservation or humans adapting to climate change. It's like the exact opposite. Trying to maximize the area that can be used for market residential homes and for CU to expand with no promises, no land exchange, no protecting of more open space. City gets nothing and wildlife gets nothing. CU makes hundreds of millions. What is this supposed to be? Kill David so Goliath can stamp on him. Anyway, I'm, thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Okay, Margaret Lacombe. You should be able to unmute now. And Ben, you'll be on deck.
Okay, good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm Margaret Lacombe. I'm representing Safe South Boulder and I live in the Fraser Meadows neighborhood in South Boulder. I'm here to urge the Open Space Board to continue to hang tough, critically evaluating the impact of annexation and refusing to dispose of open space land for the current flood mitigation project. Notwithstanding how long the city has debated it, CU's imposed constraints and the city's poor execution have resulted in an inferior flood project. And now the city's mishandling of the South Boulder Creek project is placing the Open Space Board in a very difficult position. Having failed to secure enough land from CDOT to build its flood wall, the city now wants the Open Space Board to remedy its land shortage predicament by handing over a chunk of taxpayer-paid-for open space along Highway 36. This three-quarter mile long, 60-foot wide strip of land includes some of the most highly protected portions of the state natural area and one of the last Tall Grass Wetland Prairie remnants. Flood wall construction would further damage even more adjacent open space land. And disposal for the purpose of flood mitigation is a clear violation of the Open Space Charter. Both the annexation and flood project have similar adverse impacts on open space. The city wants the Open Space Board of Trustees to take the fall for impeding flood mitigation when in fact the city's own long history of misrepresentation and malfeasance in planning the flood project is responsible for the city's current land shortfall. It's also irresponsible that the city has failed for more than three years to give the Open Space Board data it needs to evaluate the flood project's impact on groundwater in the open space environment. While the city seems to be enamored with data-free decision-making regarding CU South, the same should not be forced upon the Open Space Board. Neither annexation nor the current flood project comply with the Open Space Charter requirements to preserve and protect the environment or the specific purposes for which open space land may be used. Please carefully consider the adverse impact of CU's development, not only on the CU South property, but also on the state natural area and adjacent open space. We taxpayers are supportive setting aside these lands for open space, wildlife habitat, and new space for humans to breathe. Excuse me, the CU's development will make both protecting the city against flooding and adapting to in the face of climate change as well as protection of the environment impossible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Up next is Ben Binder. Ben, you can unmute yourself now and then Linda Quigley.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Ben Binder and I live in South Boulder. Three weeks ago, there was a city council meeting on the annexation of CU South. That meeting could best be described as an infomercial to sell the shameful annexation agreement to the public. There was a great deal of misinformation provided at that meeting. Mayor Sam Weaver started the meeting by stating, "It's worth noting that this particular parcel of land was identified in the 1977 Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as an area of land to be annexed into Boulder. It was contiguous with it and it was envisioned at that time to be a subdivision. It has been intended to be housing-focused piece of land development for 45 years." In fact, because of flooding, high groundwater, threatened and endangered species, poor access, contiguity with existing open space, 220 acres in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, referred to by Sam Weaver, were designated for open space. Only 88 acres were designated for low and medium density residential. The plan did not include 1,200 dwellings, 750,000 square feet of non-residential buildings, and a 3,000-seat stadium. Furthermore, the reclamation plan for the gravel pit purchased by CU included large ponds, wetlands, and riparian areas and stated that when reclaimed, the land would be suitable for wildlife habitat. That was before CU used its political influence to gut the reclamation plan. To make well-informed decisions, you need full and accurate information. Unfortunately, in the past, there were significant errors in engineering documents and false information provided to the city council and advisory boards. The original FEMA floodplain maps were incorrect, allowing hundreds of homes to be constructed in the floodplain. At a city council meeting, a city engineer stated that CDOT had agreed to the use of its right-of-way when in fact it did not. There were numerous errors in the 2015 CH2M Hill Plan, Alternative D, which was used to define the area in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan needed for flood control. As a result, more land is needed for flood control, but CU is demanding 129 developable acres. In exchange for the city getting 32, 30.2 shares in Dry Creek Ditch Number Two for irrigating open space, the city will provide 140 acre feet of raw the city, which will provide the city with 140 acre feet of raw untreated water per year. In exchange, the city will be providing CU with 140 acre feet of treated potable water, which is worth considerably more. Please make sure that the city and open space will not be paying more than the 32.2 shares are worth. Demand an appraisal of the value of the 32-point shares of Dry Creek Ditch Number Two and the cost of providing 140 acre feet of water per year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Next to sign up was Linda Quigley. I don't see that name here. If you're under a different name, can you raise your hand? And then last on the signup was Tony Gannaway. So Tony, let's go with you now and then if anyone else wants to raise their hand to speak, I'll call them in the order that I see them. Tony, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. This is Tony Gannaway, 5438 Omaha Place. I'm also the-
Tony, you sound really quiet to me.
Oh, really? Okay, let's see what I can do about sound. Nothing from here.
Perhaps you could just lean a little closer to wherever the microphone is.
Yes, one, two, three. Is this good?
That's better.
Excellent, okay. Fine, okay. So I'm also the Secretary of Boulder Finals. In September, the OSBT meeting package had an item including dog-related changes, which I read, and while I'm not happy with some changes, they were consistent with public statements. In the past couple of weeks, I was approached on a couple of occasions by dog guardians at CU South and Dry Creek about the changes and I informed them that there was nothing- at CU South and Dry Creek about the changes, and I informed them that there was nothing unexpected. In this week's package, there's an item in seasonal leash regulations as adaptive management actions, which seems pretty harmless. Now, today, I went through last month's video to check for voice and site references, and at 3:15, I found a board member requesting revisions to the staff master plan, to the staff's master plan report, which I thought had already been accepted. My problem is that the requested revisions are so secret, they couldn't be summarized in the meeting, but were to be discussed in private between a board member and staff member. The staff member also noted that they were taking a broad look at the overall voice and site program. I don't know if it was intended, but there are alarm bells ringing in the voice and site community, and secrecy in a public meeting is not a good strategy. Thank you. That's it.
Tony, thank you. I do want to just respond briefly to your comments to let you know that we will have time slated during our retreat, which is the details of which are in this packet, where there will be a discussion of adaptive management. It is certainly our goal to have these discussions in public, and I'm not aware of any real private discussions between the trustees on this topic. So I do invite you to attend the retreat to see the in-depth discussion there. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all on the sign-up list. I'm not seeing any hands, and I'm not seeing Linda.
Okay. Last call for public comments. Please raise your hand if you had wanted to be in the queue. In seeing no more interest, we can proceed into our next events. Allison, I'm not seeing any hands, are you?
No.
Great. Okay. Dan, I'd like to hand the meeting over to you now for our public hearing portion on, actually, don't even want to begin to summarize. I'll let you summarize what we'll call this.
Thanks, Alan. Good evening, trustees. Dan Burke, Director of Open Space Mountain Parks Department. So our first item is being held as a public hearing. It is technically under a disposition, because what is being considered by trustees tonight is the extinguishment of an access easement that allows OSMP the rights to use that access easement. That same access easement also provides rights to private surrounding landowners onto open space. And so Bethany Collins, our Real Estate Services Supervisor, will be giving you a brief presentation to summarize the concept and some of the benefits that we feel would be derived from extinguishing the 66-foot easement that's on paper only. So with that, I'll turn things over to Bethany.
Thanks, Dan. Let me get my screen shared here. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Can.
All right. Get rid of some of that stuff on my screen. Hang on one second. Okay. Bethany Collins, Real Estate Supervisor with Open Space and Mountain Parks. Good evening, trustees. I'm here tonight to give a short presentation and then have time for questions and discussion. Also here with me tonight are Ollie Goodfar with the design team for the landowner, as well as Tom Harrington, and I believe Janine Harrington is also on, who are the property owners of the Canyon Side Office Park lots, and can help with any questions that maybe I can't answer. Throughout my discussion tonight, I'll likely use the terms office park, private lots, private properties, and similar terms interchangeably to refer to the three privately-owned lots that comprise the subdivision known as the Canyon Side Office Park. But please let me know if that gets confusing. With this agenda item, staff is recommending that the Open Space Board of Trustees approve and recommend that city council approve, or excuse me, approve and recommend that city council approve the extinguishment of a 60-foot-wide, non-exclusive easement for underground utilities and a right-of-way for ingress egress to the City of Boulder's Kessler Open Space property. Because the right-of-way and utility easement are considered open space interests in the private properties, extinguishment must follow the disposal procedures of Article 12, Section 177 of the Boulder City Charter. Staff is also recommending that extinguishment be conditional upon, conditioned upon release of the private interests in the same right-of-way and utility easement across the city-owned land, and a City of Boulder-approved development plan for the Canyon Side Office Park lots 1 through 3 that includes agreed-upon provisions related to bearing utilities and boundary fencing. For background, and to get your bearings, the open space and private properties we are discussing tonight are located at the far west end of Arapahoe Avenue at the mouth of Boulder Canyon in the area of Evan Fine Park and the People's Crossing. The private lots are within city limits and zone medium-density residential. One lot is partially encumbered by the Canyon Side Partnership Scenic Easement dedicated during annexation of the property in 1982. They are adjacent to the open space properties to the south and west, and to the September School and residential and motel developments to the west and east. The offices were built on the properties beginning in the early 1980s, though one of the buildings was completely destroyed in the 2013 flood. The current landowners who acquired the private lots beginning in 1995 are now interested in exploring residential redevelopment of the lots. The private lots, as well as the East Park donation, open space, were all previously owned, at least in part, by Thomas Kessler. And when Mr. Kessler sold the northern portion of his larger property in 1971, he reserved a 60-foot right-of-way for ingress and egress and underground utility easement from Arapahoe Avenue to his remaining property to maintain development potential. The city then acquired the Kessler property in 1974 and the East Park donation property, together with the right-of-way and utility easement interest in 1999. The interest has also carried through, excuse me, the title and plat for the Office Park properties. The improved driveway access to the Office Park and portion of the existing parking lot fall within the right-of-way, but the right-of-way is not improved or identified over the open space and scenic easement properties, and there are not underground utilities within that corridor. In fact, a portion of the corridor falls within the Western Mountain Parks Habitat Conservation Area, adopted in 2006, where there is an emphasis on resource protection and off-trail travel is prohibited without a permit. The HCA is the hatched area in the map image. Staff has been working with the private law owners and their representatives to consider the potential impacts and benefits of extinguishing the right-of-way and utility easement interest, and believe terminating the right-of-way and easement can be supported and considered to be of net benefit to the city under certain conditions. First, staff researched how the open space properties are currently used and accessed, what existing approved plans recommend for the area, the need and practicality of exercising the right-of-way and easement rights, and what rights could continue beyond extinguishment of the 60-foot corridor. We determine properties, the properties are accessed from the east, except for periodic ranger enforcement, but the Office Park owners will agree to ongoing pedestrian access for open space staff after extinguishment. We also found that the slope, topography, and HCA designation of the corridor makes improvement or use impractical and undesirable, and noted the social trails in this area were identified to be closed and restored in the West Trail Study Area Plan. A clear benefit is that the private interest in the right-of-way and easement across the city-owned open space, including the HCA, will also be extinguished. Additionally, as the lot owners pursue redevelopment, they will work with city staff and Excel to gain approval to underground the existing utility lines and realign them within the formal easement corridor at their cost. This includes the portion along the boundary between the private property and the East Park donation open space if impacts can be limited or restored. This work would enhance the scenic views, support wildfire mitigation strategies, and reduce vegetation removal necessary with above-ground utilities. These diagrams show the current state, including an overhead utility line that is not within the formal easement on the top left, and the potential future state with underground and realigned utilities on the lower right. Additionally, portions of the surface of the easement corridor could be restored and revegetated, including weed control, again, at the lot owner's cost. An additional benefit to the city's open space land interest associated with redevelopment is boundary fencing at the cost of the lot owners. This area experiences illegal encampment and transient activity, including trash dumping and campfires, as well as unpermitted access to the HCA. Boundary fencing and the additional activity and neighbor presence in the area that might come with any sort of residential redevelopment may further discourage the illegal and unpermitted activities. Boundary fencing would be wildlife-friendly in at least those areas adjacent to open space. The fencing design has not been selected, as development plans are in early stages, but OSMP staff would provide input on the fence design during development review, including wildlife-friendly fencing standards. Additionally, one or more gates will be installed and agreed-upon locations based on the circulation within the proposed development, with a goal of being somewhat concealed. And finally, the extinguishment would be conditioned on a city-approved development plan for the Office Park site, which includes complying with code requirements for height, drainage, access and circulation, onsite fire protection, excuse me, and utilities and engineering. The plan would include provisions discussed here, as well as OSMP staff input on lighting and native landscaping. If not pursued or approved, the right-of-way and utility easement will remain as is. This proposed extinguishment would further OSMP master plan strategies and charter purposes by extinguishing encumbrances that could give, excuse me, that could have a resource impact and allowing for better natural and scenic resource protection and enhancement of the city's open space lands. And that brings us to the staff recommendation and any questions you might have. And again, we have representatives from the landowner group here that can also potentially ask, answer some questions.
Thank you very much, Bethany, for the presentation overview, Dan for the introduction, and Ollie for making your time available to us. To remind people, the way that we handle this, we're going to have clarifying questions answered. Oh, and I see the Harringtons. Thank you also for your time. We're going to have clarifying questions to either the staff, the owners, or the design representative. Then we're going to have the public hearing portion of the engagement, and then we will return for deliberation, so we can start right into the questions phase. Dave?
Thanks for that, Bethany. I have two questions. One is the scenic easement encumbrance. What does that entail?
So the scenic easement, they're written somewhat similarly to a conservation easement, but much, much fewer words, I guess you could say. So they tend to prohibit development, any kind of structures. They prohibit grading, change, large changes in topography, and things like, you know, leaving trash or debris and planting a vegetation, kind of any kind of landscaping work. So it really is meant to keep it in its natural and scenic state. There are social trails on that scenic easement area, as well as retaining law and some steps that preexisted the scenic easement. They were permitted in the baseline and in discussions when the scenic easements were granted. So you are allowed to walk on it. And again, it's really, it's monitored and enforced so that the scenic, natural, and open space character aren't impaired. Very often, and we actually have kind of a 101 for you guys probably next month on all of our various easement holdings, but most of the time, the scenic easements this city holds were granted during annexation or development review.
So that was part of my question of follow-ups. So what's the status then of the trails that are on, or within that scenic easement?
So the trails are permitted. They, I believe, the Office Park employees go out there for lunch, things like that. It is not public, so it's not, it's not open to the public. It's for the private use and the private users, or the landowners, frankly, to give permission to have those uses. So the trails are permitted if they allow them, and if they allow people to use them, but they're not open to the public. If there is, if there are encampments, they are permitted to, you know, they're not, again, they're not, other members of the public aren't generally allowed to be on it.
And just to add--
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you know about conservation and scenic easements, but just for those who, just for clarification, so with a conservation easement or a scenic easement, the city does not actually own the property. It's privately owned. We just have the certain rights that are pro, we have the right to enforce the certain terms that are prohibited on that private property. So this is not the owned land that the Open Space Department manages. This is still, this remains a private property.
Yeah, my concern, Dan, and thanks for that. My concern is access onto joining open space, you know, from that property. And then the other question I had, Bethany, was flood hazard potential. Does this easement extinguishment affect that at all?
It does not. So during, you know, during development review, obviously, they have to look at drainage patterns and things like that over a site if they propose a development. And from an open space standpoint, we do not control or permit private control of drainage or flood, you know, of flood control on open space to protect private property. So they would have to do any kind of flood mitigation or, you know, dealing with drainage patterns on their own private site.
Thanks.
Sure.
Karen? Karen?
Bethany, could I ask you to put back up? But can you hear me?
Yeah.
Bethany, could I ask you to please put back up the map on which you show the location of the fence that's proposed?
Sure. Hold on one moment. Going slow. Just a second.
Maybe while we're reaching for that, I could ask the Design and Ownership Group to tell us about your understanding of the location of the underground trenching for the power lines. We got it up there, too. We'll cover both of those issues here.
Is that the one you were looking for, Karen?
Well, I thought you had one with the fence marked.
This is the, is it not showing right now? Let me see.
Yeah, that's, that's better. And I keep, I keep getting warnings that my internet connection is unstable, so if I drop off, I'll try to get my way back. So this fence goes around the outside edge of that conservation easement that Dave and Bethany were just talking about. There are to be gates, I heard you say. Are these gates to be locked or open to everyone? Or tell me what the plan is for the gates.
They would be locked. They're purely for enforcement or staff maintenance, any kind of maintenance access that would be necessary.
Okay, so if someone gets an off-trail permit for use in the HCA there, they could not access the property from this location. Is that correct?
We could arrange for access, or we would let them know how they can get there from that road to the east near the Steric North and South Conservation Easements in the Steric property.
Which, okay. The other thing that I don't understand at all, and I went out there to get a better handle on the property and what's being proposed. Can you go back to that map, please?
Sure. Sure.
Or that one's okay.
Is this the one you're looking for, the fencing one again?
That's fine. It's my understanding that that this was all initiated by the owners of the Creekside Park, Office Park, wanting to do some development. It's not clear to me where that development is intended to happen. Can somebody just talk generally about what the owners have in mind?
Certainly. Ali, do you want to, do you want to jump on and just say conceptually what they're looking at and the redevelopment of lots one through three?
You're on mute.
Ali and I have been talking about it. We haven't figured out exactly what we want to do. I'm deciding whether to do residential development on just Lot 1 and leave a mixed-use project or do residential development on lots 1, 2, 3 together and demolish some things. And part of, part of that decision is based on whether we extinguish this 60-foot road, which I don't think would look good. Does that answer your question, Karen? It's residential zoning is currently existing as commercial and with big parking lots. I imagine we'll come up with something more attractive.
So it would be, Lot 1, as I understand it, is to the east of this right of way. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so the whole purpose of extinguishing the right of way is so that you can make Lot 1 and Lot 2 basically contiguous without the right of way in between, right?
That's certainly part of the benefit to me. And honestly, I'm very preliminarily involved in discussions of what we're going to build there. And that's not what I do. I own office properties. And I'm just trying to get this thing set up in a way that I know what they're going to do too. And I don't want to drive back into Boulder, you know, from Steamboat and see that they've built a 60-foot road up through the habitat corridor. So I'm trying to get this set up before I allow someone to take over and just go. So I'm imagining it will look something similar to like what they're building at the Silver Saddle or what Tom did down at 210 Arapahoe. That's just not my specialty, so I don't know. I just would like to get it set before I lose control.
That's helpful and I understand what you're describing. And I appreciate that. Thank you. So in terms of open space, what this would mean is that that, that right of way would be eliminated through, mostly through the East Park donation, which is a fee title property of open space. Is that correct, Bethany?
That's correct. Yes, Karen.
And also would not go into the scenic easement, which we've just heard about.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Then, the other question that I have to understand conceptually what this means for the area is the undergrounding of the utility cables. And for those of you who haven't been out there, it's, right now, it's a rat's nest of huge power poles and cables and very intrusive looking utility lines across the area. Can anyone describe where those, where the undergrounding is supposed to happen? I assume it's on the Creekside Office Park private property. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me share. I can share my screen again. Just a second.
So what, as Bethany does that, right now, the power poles that you described are the new power poles that they installed about seven or eight years ago. And like you said, they're quite intrusive and they didn't even remove their old poles. So that's where you get the rat's nest. And also those poles are on open space and they're not in the utility easement that XL has. So they have a prescriptive easement, so they are taking more open space in addition to their legal easement by having their poles where they are. So we would put the XL underground lines back into the existing XL easement. Because we're only extinguishing the easements for the road. We're not extinguishing XL's easement. So if you look at the bottom right
Where would, can some?
Yeah, where is that, that the undergrounding would be? Is it shown on any of these maps? And if so, what color? Because I can't read the keys very well.
Okay, Karen, the pink line on the lower right is the width of the easement, basically a visualization of the width of the actual easement. The blue is what's intended to be the undergrounding, the utility. So basically, within their easement along that East Park boundary and then the boundary, basically, of the scenic easement area. So right now, if you look at the top left, you've got the orange is kind of the existing lines, right? And so they're not within easements. They, as you pointed out, are kind of all over the place. And so they're really working, at least within the, you know, their area of control and our control and cooperation as well to, through a proposed development to be able to underground the portion that is on their property.
But my specific question is, is the undergrounding on the east side of the fence going to be, or on the east side of the property going to be on the north side of the fence or the south side of the fence?
It's probably right on the, the boundary is probably the center line of the described easement. And so that it would probably go right down the center line, which is also the boundary line or fence line. But as Karen had noted to me that there were surveyors out there, you know, remarking that property line, apparently, that there are property corners, apparently, some of the markers had gone missing. And for the exact purpose of trying to figure out exactly where XL's lines currently exist and where that easement is.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought, I thought those survey points were in the scenic easement. I didn't think they were at that boundary line.
Yeah, they're at that corner.
I thought they were further south than that.
Right.
That's pretty high, that's pretty high up on the hill then.
Yep.
Okay, additional clarifying questions? Caroline?
Is the undergrounding to continue to the east through the, through the open space land?
That would be, that would be, that would be up to us to work through with XL if we wanted to do that at our expense, really. Or if XL, that's, while it's a, and that's maybe a conversation also to have with city utilities as far as their partnership. Because while it's in the county, I believe that that's one of the city assets. So something we could certainly open up to talk about as this, as this gets undertaken.
Thank you. Caroline?
Yeah, thanks. A couple of questions. Going off of what Karen said about the fencing, I went out to the property as well and took a look at it. And while I was there, I experienced transient activity in the back of the property. The fencing that's proposed with the benefit of preventing that, I think from being out there and seeing the activity that goes on back there, I'm confused at how the fencing that was put up on the screen would prevent that activity. Because it appeared to me that the transient activity that I experienced did not walk in the way that I did, that they had come from the east headed west behind the property. But perhaps I'm not quite aware of how that's happening back there.
It's, it really is one step, Caroline, of, you know, people do access through this office park, they access from other locations too. And so this is an area, you know, with, with the 90 Arapahoe development that which will have about, I believe, 50 residents once constructed. You know, the September school being nearby, a lot more activity, you know, both daytime and into the evening and early morning activity with residential versus kind of that, what's, what had been there or hasn't been there for years may, may have an effect of discouraging the access. But this is one step. It doesn't solve everything, but that's why we say kind of discourage but not prevent, right?
And my next question is, when was the application submitted?
The application for, what are you asking?
For the, for the request for what we're doing this evening?
So this, the initial request, we actually started working, or actually Dan and somebody who is no longer at Open Space, Luke had actually initially started working with Tom Harrington and his group back in 2016 on this request. And I think, you know, whatever came to be, it kind of went to rest and it's back. And so, and they approached me again, I believe about four months ago, three months ago.
And was there a new application that was resubmitted at that time?
So as far as applications, we don't have a formal way to apply to us right now. We have, we have that we, you know, we, we get phone calls, we do a lot of emails and we work together through a lot of the considerations and things as far as benefits, impacts and a lot of that balancing.
So my reason for that question was, you know, what's been upcoming on our agenda for November, which is our conservation easement program update. So I wasn't sure how presenting this at the October meeting and then having that update at the November meeting, if they crisscross in any way that, that we need to know about?
No, the conservation easement update was a request that we had from some board members and also just our real estate program update in general. But we had board members and staff say it's time to kind of give conservation easement 101. So they have really nothing to do with each other. I think one thing you might be kind of not alluding to but hitting at is that we had brought forward the idea of kind of going through that license and disposal guidelines and establishing, you know, kind of that guideline. I guess you could say kind of steps or how, how our general process works. And we haven't, we haven't yet finalized or established that and we do need to bring it back to life. And that definitely, you know, that included this, this concept of doing, you know, an application packet, but we don't have that in place. And so we don't, you know, again, we, we work through very similar, you know, exact same steps, but not with the formal application process that, that maybe someday we'll be able to put in place.
And so I guess my question would be, if this initially was brought up in 2016 and then we're talking about it today because I'm looking at our policy for easement requests. So in hearing you say that, I just feel a bit confused as to how we're organizing all the information given without a formal application. I'm just not sure if I'm missing something here. Or at what, at what point did we stop recommending that applicants give us a formal application?
So that's the only policy we have in place, Caroline, is to request an easement, to request disposal, an easement be given, not to get to be extinguished. So this is a different process, but again, we're following kind of the same, the same impact benefit analysis, things like that. Does that help clarify that?
That makes sense now. Thank you.
Definitely.
I'd also like to make a comment there. This board earlier on saw a process and documents related to the staff's attempts to streamline items related to disposal, which has been stopped for a variety of reasons. So partially, this board itself is responsible for not having as much clarity around that as we should. And that's a project I'd like to return to, hopefully in my time here as well. So I'll throw that out there as well.
Great.
Does anybody else have any clarifying questions before we head to the public hearing? I had one more small one myself. And that is for the owner and design team, the wildlife fence, which is going on the external edge of Canyon Side Partnership. I'm just wondering, do you have within the conservation easement a vision for how that area that is north of the fence is going to be used ultimately? Just help paint a picture of what you're thinking there.
I think it'll be used kind of the way that Bethany was describing now. I think occasionally people go out there and meditate. We had a Buddhist group that were office tenants. And I think we also have a lot of healers and therapists. So a lot of times I think people just go into themselves. And that, that isn't, you know, that, I think that's a useful thing. I do think it is a good idea to have the fence that open space will approve. Because there, there has been some tracks that go into the habitat conservation area. And I think that's partly because there's a sign saying, don't do it. But I think a fence will stop it and I don't think people will climb over the fence. With the exception of, you know, possibly the transients and stuff. But I do think if you knew, as you gain control and there's less people, I think it'll be easier for you to target your enforcement and keep it safe. I mean, part of my concern is when they were describing the trail that goes up there, there's also 10 no trespassing signs. Because I don't like finding the ashes of fires. I think that's a bad idea. And so it just, when everyone leaves for the weekend, it's, it's pretty open, so.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I appreciate it. Karen, you had some final questions?
Yeah, I want to, I want to pursue the fence thing a bit because I am all in favor of adding a fence here and reducing the fragmentation of the HCA with the social trail and other uses and fire pits and so forth. And and I want a better concept in my mind of what this fence looks like. Bethany has described two gates and I'd like to leave the gates aside for the time being and just hear about the fence. The fence is to prevent wildlife from moving through the fence. Is that right? Or is it a wild, is it a wildlife fence because it allows wildlife to pass?
Yeah, it's wildlife friendly, Karen. So it's a lot, a lot of times you see there are four, are four or six strand smooth wire fencing. It's our, it's our typical fencing design where there's a bit of a gap at the bottom, really. So there's, there's a bit more wiring at the top, often again for six strand. But it's our, it's our standard fencing that you see a lot of places. And yes, wildlife friendly means that it would allow wildlife under, yeah, yeah. Sorry for that.
So you're expecting a six-strand fence?
Four to six strand. I can't, you know, that, that would be input I would get from our wildlife staff. Absolutely.
I share Mr. Harrington's concern about the, the usage by people who go up there and build fires and camp out. Because having a wildfire come down into all the development along there would be disastrous. And it is, in my opinion, it has been designated an HCA because it is really high-quality land with beautiful stands of big blue stem and, and ponderosas. And it's really a lovely area. So I, I'm all in favor of the fencing part.
Yeah, the fencing, and I pointed out in one of my slides, they do city, the city planning as part of development review. When you are at the, you know, kind of wildland urban interface, they look, the fire, the fire department looks very closely and, and works with the developers very closely on sprinklers and fire mitigation on their site as well. So, which has a kind of a spillover benefit of being right on the, on the fringe of the open space as well.
Great. And we are going to have time to come back for deliberation. Are there any other questions? Okay, great. Seeing none. Allison, I would ask you to help me tee up the public hearing segment of this item.
Sure. So there, no one signed up?
Yeah, for sure. So there, no one signed up in advance of the meeting, but if um anyone would like to speak now, they can raise their hand either in the participants' box, the little uh box at the bottom of that, or by hovering over the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen. You should be able to find the raise hand feature. And I have not seen any hands right now, Hal.
Okay, um, seeing no interested members of the public, we will uh therefore close the public hearing section of the meeting and return for deliberation. Uh, I think maybe a good way to sort of start this, I, I, this is more of, I, I could have asked it as a question, but clearly from the presentation, the existing easement shown, or the existing easement shown in yellow, designed in this S-shaped fashion, has to do with a previously planned uh perhaps power line project that likely is no longer ever going to happen, correct?
Um, I'm not sure about power line. It actually kind of follows the drainage, which who knows why they would ever put access and, and utilities necessarily in the drainage, but I think that, that S a little bit follows. But again, um, I, I couldn't contemplate why uh it is in the, in the shape it is, other than um to, you know, that, that that's the way it was legally described in nineteen seven, you know, in the deeds in nineteen seventies, so.
So I guess I'll start there for my piece and say, um, I also found it to be a bit nonsensical, and I see the value of simplification in this area. So I'll start there and we'll open it up to other uh thoughts, uh questions and discussion. Dave? You're on mute.
Yeah, I, I guess I want to say a couple of things. So one is um, I, I, I found the information in the presentation confusing, and I, I'm glad, Hal, that you see it as simplified, but I, I, I think that there's a benefit for the open space program, but it's, it, it, it isn't startlingly clear to me, um, given kind of all the uh um attached uh issues. So uh, one of the things I, I would like to say is that I think it speaks to the need for us to uh really get going and finish this policy and guideline effort on um disposals, licenses and things like that, because I, I do agree with Caroline that, um, you know, this seems to be kind of a, um, you know, laissez faire approach to uh, to land management. The other thing that I, I am very concerned about is that in the legal notice, uh, I found it to be inscrutable. Um, and, and I, I don't know who is responsible for preparing those, but I would urge that i- if we have to have a notice like that uh for legal reasons, that's one thing, but I do think, and this uh goes back to some previous um uh notices for disposal as well, that there ought to be a plain English translation of whatever the notice says, because from my perspective, um, you know, half of it uh, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And so I, I do think that um if we are going to notice it in the legal notices in the paper, then when we announce the meeting, uh, we ought to, we ought to have accompanying the, a, a plainer English translation of what it is that we think we're doing. Um, so anyway, I, I uh am somewhat discomfited by this whole process, although I think there is a benefit to the open space program and, and so I'll probably end up supporting it, but somewhat unhappily.
I, I appreciate that, Dave. I just do need to flag again, um, the staff did a very nice job of initiating a process meant to funnel and organize this, and it found resistance at the board level. Um, it is my opinion actually ready for the big time, and we should look at getting it back together where we left off. The document was a beautiful place. But I don't think there is any fair blame laid at the staff's feet on this. It remains ad hoc due to choices of the board.
Yeah, I'm not laying blame on the staff. I'm just saying that we ought to get it done.
I agree, I agree with that.
And use it.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Great. Caroline?
Thank you. If the owners could speak, um, just kind of off of what Dave said, and let us know if um they're surrounding an immediate neighbors are aware of this being brought forward, just in case the notice in the paper wasn't something that they were able to see, since this has been something that was brought up since two thousand sixteen, I would imagine that they, they might be clued in on it, but um if the owners could let us know if, if um neighbors are aware that they are asking for this, or they're not, they're not sure if neighbors are aware.
Uh, thanks, Carolyn. And I, why don't I address the, the, the dates a little bit too? So uh originally, my sister and my wife's brother and sister were all owners of the office buildings. And uh then we bought the other lot because it became available and I wanted, I, you know, wanted to know what was going to happen with the neighborhood. So as part of that process, we had to buy them out. So that took a few years and we finished paying for that last year. And then uh our youngest son finished college. So uh our lives are cleaning up a little bit. So uh, I, I think uh that the neighborhood is very alert and aware of redevelopments that's happening between Silver Saddle and uh the September School. And then there's a new house just uh south of our property that went in. I think all of those people are kind of aware. I don't know if they know of this easement because this road easement really just affects you, o- open space and us. So you get, if you wanted to, you get to drive across my property if I want to. We could pave into the habitat area and drive up there. And before I lose control, I want, I, I, I want David to understand, I don't want that road there. So that's the, the, you know, Boulders is my hometown, and I, I just, I love this place. So I want it to look right. And then on the scenic easement, I would also say, uh, we can't plant trees, we can't cut trees. So it's going to remain much in the state that it is now. And I think with the barrier of the fence and the additional presence of people in off hours, I think there's going to be less people walking from Evan Fine Park or pushing shopping carts from Evan Fine Park up into this and then just going off. And I, I think that, that will, it may not solve the problems of people back in the HCA, but I think it will give you enough control that then you could, your rangers will be able to finish the job, and it will make that area much more secure.
And when you speak of, um, just um, so I, I make sure I understand it properly, when you speak of before you lose control, can you tell me what you're referring to?
I, I probably will sell it, or uh, you know, I'm talking to developers. I, I, I'm not a developer. Uh, I, I like fixing things up, but I, I just don't necessarily understand that process. So I just uh, I'm, we both lost our mothers last year from COVID, so we're the next generation to go. And we've owned it for twenty-six years, but uh, I'm not sure we're gonna own it for another twenty-six. So it just seemed like a time where, you know, we now don't, our siblings are not part of it anymore, and it, it's time to do something on lot one or on lot one, two, three. And uh honestly, if we build multifamily, we might move into one of the units, because we really love it there too.
And the, the four lease sign that's in front of the property, is, is that, that's yours as well?
Yes, those two office buildings uh were what we started with in nineteen ninety-five. And uh, we just had a new therapist move in there who does music therapy. So uh, that side will be coming down, but that's the type of people who have been there because of the environment.
Okay, and that's what the, the four lease sign was for, was for the, the office buildings?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Tom. I feel that um some nighttime occupancy, as opposed to the daytime commercial use, will probably help address some of the transience issues back there as well. Um, I see that as a big benefit. Uh, it's certainly a hope of mine that in the uh undergrounding process and the fence building, that of course we have the least amount of ground unsettlement as possible. But clearly from my visit to the area, the aesthetic benefits of that are going to be quite large. Other thoughts from board members? Karen? Karen?
Um, a quick, a quick comment first. When I was out there, I did wind up talking to the people in the new structure that is just southeast uh in that part that, that's held privately, that goes further south. And they were not aware that anything was, was going on, but as Tom said, that's um east and away from the right of way. That's the subject of what we're talking about here. I, more importantly, I wanted to comment on Dave's um statement because I also agree that this was really inscrutable. And, and I think we need to do a better job of using plain English to communicate what we're trying to communicate. In fact, um, the staff recommendation on page three of the packet I think is, is very unclear, and I would like to suggest that it say in the second line, authorizes the extinguishment of a sixty-foot wide, non-exclusive easement for underground utilities. Get rid of the comma, and of a right-of-way for ingress and egress, egress. Get rid of the comma, to the City of Boulders Castler Open Space Property. Because the way it's written now, it's really unclear about what the it is that we're trying to do.
Uh, are, can, are you attempting to lift an amended, an amended motion perhaps? Can I take that as that?
Yeah, I'm, and I would like to say if that is okay with my fellow board members, I'd like to propose a motion that makes those changes in the grammar of the recommendation.
That's great. Can we work here on this document? Are you able to see that?
Sure. On the fourth line, get rid of the comma after utilities. And after the and, add the word of, and get rid of the comma after egress.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any uh final comments before we uh vote on this amended motion? Caroline?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I just want to be clear, um, because I'm, I'm not right now. Um, this will lead to the development of this within the Habitat Conservation Area. From the map and what I looked at, that is that accurate, that that is what will?
No, the, yeah, no, the, the develop, any, any potential development is purely on the areas of the lots, the, the areas of the properties and the pit maps and everything else that are not green. So um, I can, I can certainly, and, and I apologize, there wasn't one with an overlay of a the Habitat Conservation Area in the, in the um memo, but I certainly could share that again if, if you need to. But no, it will not allow any kind of development in the HCA. If it's not extinguishment, i- if it's not extinguished, yes, this right-of-way and utility easement could, and it could result in develop, in, in development of the right-of-way and the, the utility easement within the HCA.
I think the easiest, for me, the easiest way to see that is on page six of the agenda item three in the packet.
That's what I'm looking at.
Where, where the yellow lines outline lot one, two, and three on the brown private property. And that's where the development would occur, as I understand it. And the, the East Park donation, OSMP property, would then stay whole with no easements through it for right-of-ways. Either utility right-of-way or road right-of-way. And, and the Canyon Side Partnership scenic easement would also have no easement on it for either road or utilities. So they, that's why the location of the utility undergrounding is important, and it's my understanding that that will occur along the northern boundary where the open space land and the scenic easement land butt up against the private lots one, two, and three.
You've got it, Karen.
Yeah, that, that's really helpful. Thank you, Karen.
Dave?
Uh, so I, I have another, or several more suggestions. I, I would propose that we actually put a period uh after charter so that the, the extinguishment on open space is one sentence. So that is in line, what is that, seven or something? Yeah, seven, I think, or eight. Yeah, down, yeah, there, a charter. And then start a new sentence.
Right there.
Right, put a period there. And now this is just a proposal. Start a new sentence, uh, then that's uh, that says something like the, you know, this extinguishment of, you know, easement or whatever is conditioned upon. So then, so you've got a, it, it, this reads like we're supporting development of this property, and it's like, wait a second, you know? Our concern is the extinguishment of the easement. The only uh relationship we have with development of the property are there, is that there are certain other provisions that might apply. And I'm very concerned, again, with the language that we've already encountered in other places regarding um, you know, disposal, agreed-upon provisions. I, I think we ought to state specifically what the provisions need to be.
I totally agree. And, and Leah, if you would write where the cursor is, if you'd put the word is and eliminate the and, I think we'd have what Dave is suggesting.
And Dave, um, we can't, we can't necessarily identify those provisions because we don't yet know about Excel's agreement, and we don't yet have a plan for the undergrounding of utilities and things, and, and the potential impacts. So if it's incredibly impactful with large trenches, things like that, we want to know before we, we say, if you can bury them, we'll let you go ahead. Or we'll, you know, we'll grant this with this, this extinguishment. And so um, that's why, you know, we were, we were um making it conditional upon being able to come to those terms if development is pursued. Otherwise, we don't have, there's not necessarily a reason to go beyond status quo until and unless, um.
But Bethany, isn't that, isn't that what the second sentence says?
Yeah, he was saying he, he wanted to go further up of what those agreed upon, of identifying what those provisions would be.
And I still, I, whoops, I still want to do that. Bethany, if we, you know, we can say what we think the provisions ought to be in this motion. And that, that gives you the wherewithal in the future to negotiate with Excel.
Well, right, I just didn't want, I didn't want absolutes because that puts us into, into a corner during any kind of, you know, that, that, that paints us into a corner during development.
Yeah, I feel that that level of detail is best addressed, addressed by the staff here, and I place my trust in them to do that.
And I think we should uh remove that uh reference then, because uh I, I don't think it really speaks to the issue.
I, I disagree. Um, I didn't find.
Oh, how would you revise?
Did you, are you, are you asking me?
I, I, I believe that the memo has good clarity about these provisions. I didn't find it as mystifying as everyone else. Um, and so I, I take a somewhat different view here.
Well, that's good for you, Hal, but uh I'm just saying that uh.
Before we go down the road of modifying and spending another fifteen minutes on the motion, I'd like to turn to Michelle and Caroline for their opinion, um, because I may not be alone in that.
Um, well, Dave didn't get to finish what he was saying, so um I would like to, to let him speak and hear him out.
Yes, thank you. So in the second sentence, I think the easement ext- So in the second sentence, I think the easement extinguishment, so there should be the word easement before extinguishment. This is easement extinguishment. And then as far as agreed upon provisions. I I don't know.
I feel like Karen had a thought, but Karen, your your internet was kind of going in and out, so it sounded like you started to say something, and then we all kind of lost your input as well. Maybe we lost her altogether.
I, I'm still here. But I keep getting signs that say my internet connection is unstable. So I I'm wondering, Dave, whether you're you want to in, you want to continue to include or delete the last two lines that say, and that includes agreed upon provisions related to bearing utilities and boundary fencing.
Well, I I would do one or the other, and and if we if we keep the sentence, then I think we ought to say, who are the agreed upon parties? You know, who who's agreeing upon the provisions? Because for me, that is totally ambiguous.
Okay, how about saying that includes provisions related to burying utilities and boundary fencing agreed upon by, after the word fencing, yep. Leah, just move agreed upon. Delete it there. And no, at the end of the sentence.
So Bethany, who's agreeing upon the provisions?
This is going to be the planning board.
It would, it it's, it's a a conglomeration of a planning board, city council with recommendations by planning staff, open space staff, and that the applicant agrees to, so that you could put between the the.
Well, it's between the Excel, the city, and the applicant, right?
That's right.
Yep.
And those, so that's what I would.
Yep. I like it, Dave.
By by the, by the city, Excel, and the applicant.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I zoom out and ask a question here?
Please, Michelle.
Um, so, and I'm not sure what I'm missing here. If we leave the easement in place, somebody can build a road. If we remove the easement, nobody can build a road through there, which further, I mean, it supports and protects the HCA. I I don't believe the question in front of us is about development. I I think that is, it is strictly about the easement. It is strictly about protecting open space. I feel like I get the sense here through the education of this meeting and the materials that the Harringtons are trying to do the right thing here for for open space and for our community. And and trying to tie this to what people will do with the development and the planning board and the city and Excel. I I think that's, that's not what we're being asked here, and we're kind of trying to assert ourselves. I think we're projecting a little bit on other experiences, but this particular situation, unless I'm totally missing something, so please correct me if I'm missing something major, Bethany, but the scope of what we're being asked here is really to continue to protect open space through the extinguishment of this easement. Trying to tie all these other things down the, down the road about developing the property is a separate question.
We are, I mean, it it does come down to the extinguishment as a right of way and the easement that could be, could be impactful to open spaces, part of consideration and going through a lot of this, this, this process with people who approach for for disposals, any kind of disposal, you do try to put together a package of showing net benefit to open space. Not just everybody wins kind of a thing, which would be great, but this was also a way that they were willing to, you know, both in the interest of a potential development and and the scenic attributes of their own development or their own office park of things like buried utilities, you know, being, trying to bury the utilities or or working with Excel to bury the utilities as well as city, because it's it's often addressed through development as, and and also this this concept of of boundary fencing, because you know, not only would it, would it benefit or or discourage the the existing activities in the area or the the issues we're facing right now, but it also puts up a barrier for there, you know, these new neighbors, these new, you know, whether it's from from up the street, down the street, or from their site. It puts up that that, it establishes that boundary. And so there is, you know, there, there's those those tie-ins, I think, but but yes, you could peel, peel, peel back all those layers and and just make it about the easement and right of way disposal, and I would be absolutely comfortable with that as well.
Michelle, I think, I think that.
But it it's a two-party extinguishment. There, there are two parties involved that it wouldn't make any sense for the city or open space to extinguish extinguish its portion of the easement and not have the other party do that as well.
And and that's what's addressed in the memo. So my, my concern here in my role, of course, is the pacing of the meeting and all the business that we've been anticipating for a long time in front of us. I personally feel that the provisions and who our speculations about will create those things. I I do think we're wading into territory, which isn't really our own. I'd be comfortable ending it at provisions related to bearing utilities and boundary fencing, as opposed to speculating on who will be agreeing on those. If people can come along there, I think we can move forward.
Hal, I'm just afraid that this, now that we're doing this disposal in the context of other more controversial, controversial and larger disposals, that it will be viewed as a precedent, and I think we should be mindful of being very careful of how we do this.
Yes, I I and I and I look forward to talking about that in detail related to the discussion later this evening. But I do not believe that separate events should cast a shadow over what is fundamental business that comes before this board quite regularly. And simplification of easements, especially where we're gaining additional protection for land that is threatened from various varieties of development, I think is really understandable to the public. And you you know, pursuant to what Michelle said, I I've been waiting because I do have a personal comment I wanted to make to Tom and Janine if we can get past this, because I do think it's fair to to offer your thoughts outside of the role of this board. But getting into trying to control or speculate on what other parts of the government are going to be involved in the development consideration strikes me as unnecessary and and frankly unwanted. Caroline.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Michelle, I think, at least for me, the way that I looked at what we were given on our last page under next steps, it says, if approved, OSP and CAO will work with the landowners and Planning and Development Services staff to process the ROW and easement termination as conditionally approved. So just for me in reading what we were given, that's, that's kind of my, my note that that says our recommendation needs to have what is being asked, and I understand that maybe Hal reads that differently, but it it seems to me that we're not really speculating on who's going to be involved moving forward. It it states it right here. And I just think our recommendation should any recommendation we make, you know, should be as thoughtful and as encompassing as we can, you know, possibly make it. And I do agree with Dave that a lot of what we do, you know, should have some linear like movement with it as far, as far as what we do for one, we should do to another in in speaking of all of it. So I guess I'm just confused as to to why it's.
I I'd like to just comment on that. The staff recommendation as originally proposed referred back to the memorandum, which is adequate written information for me, hence my feeling that we don't need to copy the memorandum in the motion. It was already in writing, and that was satisfactory, in my opinion.
I think that myself included, a few of the board members were just confused that are unsure of what was put out to the public as far as the notice and making sure that the applicant and the planning board and and all of them are obviously going to move forward and and do their business, but you know, because this is taxpayer dollars, just to make sure that we're completely, you know, as clear as possible.
Then then let's continue to work on the motion because we have two people who are ready to go and three who are not, so somebody needs to get to a motion that is secondable and executable. I will iterate that the conditions as listed by the staff in the memo were satisfactory to me. Go ahead, Karen.
I'd like to move the Open Space Board of Trustees approve and recommend that city council authorizes the extinguishment of a sixty foot wide non-exclusive easement for underground utilities and of a right of way for eager ingress in egress to the city of Boulders Castler Open Space Property pursuant to the disposal procedures of Article twelve, Section one seventy-seven of the City Charter. This this easement extinguishment is conditioned upon release of private interests in the same and the city of Boulder approved development plan for the Canyon Side Office Park Lots one through three that includes provisions related to bearing utilities and boundary fencing agreed upon by the city, Excel, and the applicant.
Michelle, are you still in a position to second?
Is there a second?
You're on mute, Michelle.
I'm not going to second that.
I'll second.
Great. Let's call the roll. Caroline Miller, how do you feel on this one?
Yes.
Michelle, it's great.
Um, can you come back to me in a bit?
Yes, I'm I'm going to vote for this. I think that citing who is agreeing upon it is extraneous, but it doesn't bother me, and so I will vote for it.
Can I ask? How how does tying in these additional conditions affect what needs to be done, Bethany? Can I just get your opinion on that?
Well, I before Bethany answers, I just want to share my opinion is there were no new conditions added. The conditions are found in the bullet points offered in the staff memorandum. And the board chose to clarify who we felt the parties that would be responsible for delivering on those conditions were. Is that right, Bethany? You're on mute.
I I don't, I don't see a problem with this motion. Those are parties that would have to agree to to those those provisions. So again, while it might be extraneous, I I I don't think it's a problem. I would probably add this easement and right of way extinguishment is conditioned upon just because they are two separate interests that are all included in the deed, two identified interests, I should say. If if you guys would be.
Say that again.
Where Leah's cursor is, say this easement and right of way extinguishment, because they are two, as as you included above, Karen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, thank you.
No, Michelle, those, those are parties that would have, be part of the the decision-making on those provisions. So it doesn't give me heartburn if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so writing that down explicitly, it doesn't impact that. Then then I will support this. Thank you for your take on that, Bethany.
Thank you for your question.
Great. We have a unanimous motion and closed business. Are the, Tom and Janine, you're still with us. You were just behind another screen of mine. I just wanted to share in closing a brief comment outside of our role as board members. I really do hope with this new flexibility and the great benefits you will provide with the undergrounding and the clearing of these easements, that you really do help us get a beautiful job in whatever development comes down there. And we would be delighted if it was so great that you would return to live there yourself.
Well, thank you all, and like everyone else who called in, the open space is one of the reasons Boulder is special, and the reason open space works is because of volunteers and the community. Everyone needs to protect it. So I just really need to see you guys in action protecting.
We look forward to helping, Tom and Ollie. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you being with us.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Take care.
Wonderful. With that, we are moving on, Dan, to matters from the department. And we will keep rolling.
Great. First of all, just thank you, Bethany and real estate staff for working on this issue. Appreciate that, and thank you, board, for your deliberations on that. So our matters from the department is one that I personally have been looking forward to, and I, and so as you know, we have about twelve different workgroups within the department, and we try to provide an update on various workgroups to this board from time to time, so you get a better idea of what's happening on the ground in our system. Sometimes the work of these workgroups, it doesn't necessarily result in a sort of a public hearing item that needs to be decided or something like that. So I always like to carve out time to make sure that you're aware of some important work. And tonight, I'm super excited to have a presentation to you all on the wildlife program update. And we've got a couple of staff members that are going to help us lead this through, but I'm going to kick it off by turning it over to our wildlife ecologist, Will Keely, who will sort of introduce some staff that are involved in this program and work through updating you on some high-important projects that we have ongoing in this program. So, Will, if you are here, take it away.
Great, thanks, Dan. Yeah, so Heather and I are going to alternate on these. So Leah's been kind enough to lead us through the PowerPoint. Hi, trustees. My name is Will Keely. I am wildlife ecologist for OSP. It's been a while since we've had a a chance to update you, so we appreciate the opportunity to do so. So we have about nine of our projects to cover, some more in-depth than others tonight, but we're happy to return in the future. If you'd like to take a deeper dive on any of these projects. So as I said, Heather and I are going to alternate these, so please bear with us on transitioning. Next slide. So our programmatic work doesn't just address strategies in the ecosystem health and resilience focus area. It also contributes to strategies in other focus areas, both directly and indirectly. So you can kind of see that depicted in in this slide, how many strategies our programs, either directly or indirectly, contribute to. Next slide. So, as I said, it's been, it's been at least two years pre-COVID since I've updated anybody from the board on wildlife projects. So Heather and I felt it appropriate to maybe reintroduce ourselves. And so again, my name is Will Keely. I've been with OSP as wildlife ecologist since two thousand and six. You'll see Heather on on the left there. She started in in two thousand and four as wildlife ecologist and is now our ecological stewardship supervisor. We have two FTEs that are wildlife resources coordinators, so Ryan Pryreshi and Christian Nunes. Both have been with us since before two thousand and ten. Christina Fairbanks and Micah Yarborough, both are wildlife technician twos, but they began with us as wildlife technician ones, as I did in two thousand and four. They've been with us for six and eight years respectively. And then Tori Polton just came on with us about a year and a half ago, pre-COVID. And then Tori Polton just came on with us about a year and a half ago, pre-COVID, as our prairie dog conservation and management coordinator. Next slide.
All right, so now I'm going to jump in. Hi, I'm Heather Swanson. Like Will, I'm super thrilled to have a chance to talk with you, at least a couple of you. I don't think I've had an opportunity to speak with, and the board as a whole, I haven't talked to about anything other than prairie dogs in quite a long time. So I'm looking forward to highlighting some of our other work that we do beyond prairie dogs. So I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of where the program has been since 2004, when I started. Prior to that, there hadn't been a wildlife ecologist on staff for a couple of years. And so a lot of the programs had kind of been put on hold or sort of weren't happening anymore. So we started kind of building from the ground up in 2004. And so what I'm showing here is just kind of what's happened through the years. The top red line is FTE staffing, so standard staff, what's been happening with that. The bottom line then is sort of how many of those staff are committed to wildlife-led projects versus other projects within the department. So wildlife-led projects would be projects that a wildlife staff member is really the project manager on. So a lot of the monitoring that we're going to be talking about, the habitat management that we're talking about, those types of things. The other projects that then would be essentially the space between the blue line and the red line are all of the other department work that the wildlife program helps to support. So that may be planning projects, it may be acquisitions, it may be trails, projects, all kinds of other projects that we help support through permitting, through recommending ways to avoid sensitive habitats, that kind of thing. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. So generally, since 2004, when we started, when I started, and there were two wildlife staff members, we really had the goal of building the capacity of the program to not only expand the wildlife work that we do, but to better support an expanding department and an expanding need for wildlife input on those on those department-wide projects. So just a couple of things up top, you see some arrows. Basically, these green arrows at the top are showing when we added an FTE to the wildlife staff. So we actually, not just a person, but added an actual FTE. So we jumped up from two FTE to three FTE. The blue arrows are kind of major events that happened that had a big influence on our work. The first one, the big blue arrow above 2013, of course, is the flood. And that fundamentally changed what we were doing for a large number of years for most people in the department, but certainly for the wildlife staff as well. And then you'll see one little black arrow, that's just kind of a change in staffing. So starting in 2004, again, we had two staff, and we were largely committed to wildlife-focused projects. And that kind of focus continued as we increased the capacity a little bit. And then in 2008, you know, implementation of the visitor master plan and the first TSA really ramped up. And so the need for wildlife coordination with other staff became much, much larger. And so we started committing more of our time to those system-wide projects. We had a retirement, we had a couple of staff leave and then come back. So those dips are kind of temporary reductions in staffing, but those were then backfilled, either with new people, or in Will's case, he came back to us from the county, which was good. And then the flood hit, and really our focus shifted pretty substantially away from wildlife work. We really had to kind of hunker down and pick the projects that really needed to continue in the face of the really vast need, especially for permitting, because so much of the infrastructure that was damaged was in really highly sensitive habitat where we had protected species. So that really dictated our work for a number of years. We were then able to add additional staff to help address some of that in 2016. That's when Ryan Pryreshi came on board. And then, you know, we were kind of on an upward trajectory. In 2018, that big blue arrow at the top is the prairie dog working group recommendations and starting to implement those, which added quite a bit to the prairie dog program and that component of the wildlife program. So you see, we kind of dipped down then a little bit on how much we were committing to other wildlife projects. And then in 2019, I transitioned over into the ecological stewardship workgroup. So that was a loss, not of a full FTE, but of a good chunk of my time as committed to wildlife projects. And then in 2020, as Will mentioned, we were able to add Tori Polton as the prairie dog management coordinator, which was fantastic. And she's really focused on the prairie dog program implementing the prairie dog working group recommendations and really moving that program forward. So we're on a good upward trajectory overall as far as capacity. You know, depending on what's going on in the department, in the community, and of course, on the landscape with things like the flood, you know, the degree to which we're focused on wildlife-specific projects obviously shifts quite a bit through time. So goals moving forward is really to continue to grow that capacity. You know, we have some big projects coming up department-wide, certainly the recreation management plan and others that will require a lot of support from wildlife staff, providing information, providing recommendations, and talking with the community about some of that. So really, our goals moving forward are just to continue to increase that capacity. I think our first priority there probably is to sort of recreate that FTE that was the wildlife supervisor position and hopefully get that filled in coming years. Next slide. So what are all these people doing? Well, we're doing a broad cross-section of work. And tonight, we're going to highlight several of those projects. We definitely can only go through a subset of them, but like Will said, you know, we'd love to hopefully have opportunities to come back and highlight somewhere in the future. So a lot of the wildlife ecology staff works on monitoring, and there's a variety of monitoring projects. Sometimes they're tied to a specific project to see the success of a management action that we're taking or as part of a TSA monitoring framework. Sometimes they're part of our ecosystem management plans, our grassland ecosystem management plan or forest ecosystem management plan, looking system-wide at wildlife populations and dynamics. We also do research, and research can be either internal with our staff leading the research project, or we also partner with a lot of outside researchers from CU, CSU, Natural Heritage Program, other areas, who are doing research on open space and help to support them in those research projects. Volunteer programs factor pretty heavily into some of our programs, and Will's going to talk about one of those a little bit later. So working with volunteers not only to help with that monitoring and research, but also with on-the-ground habitat restoration and projects like that. And so we also do a lot of in-house, on-the-ground management and restoration. And again, Will's going to talk a little bit about that with the northern leopard frog work and some of the real progress that we're making as far as restoration of some of our habitats. We do a lot of sensitive species habitat management, and you know, open space is so lucky to have so many pretty unique and rare habitats, and along with those come with species that are sensitive and may have real conservation challenges across their range. And so we focus a lot of our management on kind of those top-tier species that may be on a broad scale really in trouble, and we have the opportunity to help with their conservation on open space. And then, like I said, we support a variety of departmental projects. So that may be support for planning projects, both large-scale planning efforts like TSAs or more localized ISP-type of projects, infrastructure development, trails, trailheads, all that kind of thing. We're usually on those project teams providing support for kind of the ecological resources, giving information for acquisitions to help our real estate staff evaluate whether an acquisition is really valuable for the department. And then working with our forestry group to inform the forestry treatments to do monitoring in those stands before treatment to make sure that we're avoiding any nests or resources like that, and best really tailoring those forestry treatments to help support wildlife. And then our wildlife staff is heavily involved in regulatory compliance, and that's largely at the federal level, although certainly also sometimes with some state regulations. So things like MBTA is the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, BG EPA is the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, and the ESA, of course, is the Endangered Species Act. So our wildlife staff really fill that role of both consulting with federal agencies and state agencies as well as permitting and, you know, helping support our project managers in complying with those regulations. And then finally, we do operate a fairly large fleet of remote cameras. And those are deployed for a number of reasons. They may be doing monitoring on a newly acquired property to get sort of a baseline idea of what wildlife are using the area. It may be put in where we have a gap in a fence, and there's a good wildlife trail there to try and determine what that movement corridor is supporting. They've been used as part of our monitoring and research projects in a variety of areas. And so now I'd like to, Leah will have to kind of unshare and reshare, but I think we have a treat to share with you from a whole suite of those cameras in all different places across the system. And this is really just a collection that was put together by Christian Noons, one of our wildlife coordinators. Like I said, from cameras in a variety of locations around OSMP. And these are just kind of some highlights. We've got a pretty unbelievable number of videos and photos stored in a database that we can kind of mine for information. For anyone who may not be familiar, that's a badger, one of our very rare species that are not sighted very often. A young eagle on a prairie dog colony. For these nighttime photos, we're using infrared, so there isn't any color, but it's less disruptive to the wildlife to have the infrared rather than a flash. Thanks, Leah. I think we might have missed just the last few seconds, but that's okay. I think we got most of it. I think the last one is just a deer and a turkey kind of checking each other out, out along Boulder Creek. So again, that just kind of gives you a taste of some of the fun creatures that we get to see and sometimes not see. And that's really one of the benefits of the camera is it allows us to detect things like the badger that are very, very elusive and often nocturnal. And so our monitoring may not pick them up, but with the use of the remote cameras, we can document those species on our properties. So the first project that I'd like to sort of go through and highlight is our grassland nesting bird monitoring. And this program was begun in 2008 as part of the grassland plan monitoring program. It is a system-wide effort, and it includes 118 transects which are monitored two times each year. And you can see them, each star is just a different transect where they are distributed through the grasslands, the eastern half of OSMP where the habitat is grassland. And those are monitored during the breeding season. So these are breeding bird surveys. And so we're largely picking up those neotropical migrants that come up to nest in those grasslands and then head back south for the winter. And this monitoring has allowed us to do a number of things. It's certainly helped us to inform management decisions, and I'll highlight one of those examples in a minute. But we've recently had the opportunity to do what's called a data sprint. And Brian Annaker has really been a proponent of these and really carving out time for staff to have focused time to analyze these large data sets that we've been collecting. That often is the part of the monitoring project that gets put on the back burner when other priorities take precedent. And so having the opportunity for these data sprints is allowing us to set aside that time so that we can really analyze the data and, you know, fully get the information out of it that it can provide for informing the department. Next slide. So our data sprint provided us with information that has already been and will continue to be useful in a number of areas. It provides property-level specific information, which allows us to compare between our properties to see their value for various species of grassland nesting birds. And that can really help us to focus our management and protection on the right areas. It can also help us work with our agricultural management staff to help us inform our prescribed grazing and see if the vegetation structure that we're creating with our grazing is best supporting birds. It can help us really focus restoration efforts and our area planning as far as what types of actions we're going to take in different grassland properties and help to really focus those on the high-quality bird habitat, if that's one of our goals. The other thing that this type of a data set does is it helps to provide a baseline. And one thing with climate change research that is often lacking is a baseline to compare to. And so although this is a fairly recent data set, you could see that in 10, 20, 30, 40 years, it's very, very valuable to have a good baseline to look back at so that you can detect that change through time. The other thing that it does is it helps to inform future research. So through our funded research program, we have a list of desired projects that would help us out. One of those on the list is looking at the efficacy of our area closures for nesting success. Our monitoring program is definitely looking at breeding birds, but we're looking at the adult birds that are territorial and using the area. That may or may not correspond to a high degree of nesting success. It means that they are nesting there, but nesting success is a much harder measure to get at. That's a lot more labor-intensive. So something like that might be a great thing to partner with an outside graduate student or researcher that has the time to really focus and look at nesting success itself. And then it can also help contribute to our understanding of how our local populations compare to trends that are being seen in things like the breeding bird survey or continent-wide or regional-wide trends that are being detected in bird populations. So it helps us kind of see where our place is as compared to some broader data sets. Next slide. And so this data sprint was really taking our grassland bird data and analyzing it in a way that we hadn't been able to before. And that's with distance sampling. These transects were set up to collect data to feed into density, or sorry, to distance sampling. And distant sampling is just a way of actually coming up with a density estimate rather than just relative abundance. So an actual population estimate for an area that is scalable up and down from the area that was actually surveyed. And the really important thing also about distant sampling is it accounts for the detectability of various species. So something like a meadow lark, you might be driving at 60 miles an hour and here at 300 meters out in a field, whereas a grasshopper sparrow, you may be quietly walking through the grasslands. And if it's 30 meters away, you hardly detect it. So it's important to account for those. On the right is just showing a whole suite of, a whole community of birds and the difference in their detectability. And it can really vary widely. So in making density estimates, it's important to know, did you not hear a bird because it was not there? Or did you not hear a bird because it was too far away and it's a very quiet bird? So that's what distant sampling does, but it's far more intensive for analysis than doing that relative abundance. So we partnered with Bird Conservancy of the Rockies and one of their analysts there and examined the property-level density. And that property-level density then was rolled up to look at system-wide trends and to compare with national and regional data. And that property level density then was rolled up to look at system-wide trends and to compare with national and regional data sets to see how our trends compared to those. Next slide. And so I'm just going to focus on one species today. There's a lot more information here and I'm hopeful at some point we can present you with a much broader report of this data. But I did want to talk about the grasshopper sparrow. This is one that we often talk about. It's really one of our focal species for conservation. It's a species of conservation concern for open space, for Colorado and kind of region-wide because it has seen sustained continental scale decline since 1966. That's not unique to grasshopper sparrows. Grassland nesting birds in general are fairly imperiled, but grasshopper sparrows in particular have seen real declines. It's also an area-sensitive species, meaning that it's a species that needs a large chunk of habitat. You're not going to find them in our small fragmented habitat box, just our larger, more intact, pristine grasslands. Next slide. And so here is the density information. Looking at across years, this is system-wide, so all of those transects lumped in. Looking at what's happening with grasshopper sparrow populations on our properties through that almost 10-year period of time. And you can see there's definitely interannual variation. We saw dynamics the first three years that looked fundamentally different than the dynamics the next three years. So this shows us that there's definitely a lot of up and down. And looking at the overall trend, we do have a significantly decreasing trend in grasshopper sparrow population. But again, these ups and downs also suggest that we may be looking at fairly long timeframes of periodic changes in populations. So it's unusual to be able to monitor populations over 10 years. But looking at this data, it would suggest that you may actually see the best trends by having 20 or 30 years of data. So we've been lucky to be able to do what we have so far. And hopefully we can continue and get a better picture of these overall trends over that longer time scale. Next slide. And here's the property-specific data that I was talking about. And so on the x-axis, these are just abbreviations for different properties. So we've got, sort of in the middle, you've got IBM bird monitoring. One of the lower areas, again, that's a fairly fragmented habitat of grasslands surrounded by roads and fairly busy areas. On the far right, you've got our Tall Grass West bird monitoring. And right there, about, you know, a little bit more than a third of the way through, you have Gunbarrel Hill bird monitoring. And you can see that one is really standing out as compared to all of the other areas that we have monitored on the system. Next slide. And so that really helps us because with grasshopper sparrows being a real conservation focus for the department and for the wildlife program, that helps us to know that Gunbarrel Hill is really someplace that we need to be focusing on, not only protecting the grasshopper sparrows that we have, but maintaining the conditions that support them. And so Gunbarrel Hill is an area that recently went through an ISP planning process. And a lot of the impetus behind that was to look at how to better protect grasshopper sparrows moving into the future. And so what you see on this map is a depiction of where the transects are, those lines. And the color relates to various levels of abundance of grasshopper sparrows within that transect. And so you can see that it does vary across Gunbarrel Hill. And so what we were able to do with this is first of all, target where some of our protective measures are most needed. And so system-wide, our main tool for protecting grassland nesting birds is off-trail closures during the nesting season. So this helps us really focus those. The other thing that it helped us to do is to really focus implementation. So up in kind of the upper-left portion, you can see those red and orange transects. That's really where there are higher concentrations in grasshopper sparrows. And so managing the social trails in that area up in the northwest corner, it's called Loop A for anybody who's seen the ISP, is kind of prioritized as the first thing that will happen. And that's partially informed by this data and helping to inform those management decisions directly with the data that we have. Next slide. And then another species that we spend quite a bit of the summer monitoring is burrowing owls. These are also grassland birds, but fundamentally different from the little songbirds that we were just talking about. So they live in Boulder County, they live exclusively in prairie dog burrows. And they are listed as a threatened species at the state level. And so they're one that we want to keep pretty close eye on. So as part of the grassland management plan, we came up with a viability indicator to help inform the overall health of our grasslands by how well our burrowing owl population was doing. And so the indicator is the number of prairie dog colonies that have successful nesting by burrowing owls in any given year. So we're going out and looking at essentially every prairie dog colony on the system in order to determine if burrowing owls are there and if they are there, if they're nesting and if the nesting is successful. And through this process, we've found additional colonies that we didn't previously know had burrowing owls, which is great because it then allows us to better protect them. We often will have an off-trail closure in that prairie dog colony while they nest. And so you can see a lot of variability through the years from 2008, when we started monitoring on a more comprehensive basis up through 2019. And the graph doesn't include 2020, but we had three different colonies. Each of these colonies may have more than one pair, but because the viability indicator is actually the number of colonies with nests, that's what's shown here. And in general, for most years, we're in what we would call good viability, which is three to four colonies with nesting, successfully nesting pairs. You can see we had a series of years there from 2014 to 2016 where we were in the fair category. But luckily, that seems to have rebounded. And 2018, we had one of the highest levels of nesting burrowing owls that we ever have on our system, which was very interesting because some of our regional partners, places like Soapstone Ranch, Rocky Mountain Arsenal, in that year were very concerned because they had few or no burrowing owls nesting on their properties and were afraid that something really terrible was happening on a region-wide basis. But, you know, based on our data, it looks like for whatever reason, they were just kind of arranging themselves differently across the landscape than that year. And those properties then saw a return of their burrowing owls in 2019. So for whatever reason, our properties that year were offering what they were looking for and some of their other nesting areas were not. So it's interesting to see those trends. Next slide. And then this is the, more or less the same data, but with a little bit more detail behind it. So this is actually the number of breeding attempts or the number of nests rather than the number of colonies that are occupied and then the number of fledglings, so owls that actually got to the point that they're leaving the nest. And you can see in some years, I mean, especially that year in 2018, not only did we have a lot of nests on a lot of different prairie dog colonies, but those nests produced a lot of fledglings. So open space is really providing a lot of fledgling owls to go into that population that again, then is migrating away from our properties in the winter and then coming back to nest during the summer. And so we do monitor the success, not only where the nests are, but how long the nesting attempts occur. So we can detect if a nest has failed or if it's been successful, how long the owlets are hanging around the area with their parents. And that helps us with those protective closures, so we can be adaptive and open closures if a colony is not occupied for several years. It also helps us to coordinate with other OSMP staff for things like weed management or restoration projects that may need to happen in some of these prairie dog colonies so that they can get their work done in a way that's least likely to disturb the owls. Next slide. Now, Will, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, thanks Heather. So another sensitive species that we monitor are northern leopard frogs. You'll see the abbreviation kind of left in some of these slides just to shorten the text a bit. But yeah, our amphibian monitoring program is primarily focused on locating northern leopard frogs. They are considered by Colorado Parks and Wildlife a tier-one species of greatest conservation need. And they were actually listed to be, to be threatened under the Endangered Species Act in 2011. At that point in time, the Fish and Wildlife Service didn't think it was warranted, but they did note that the western populations are in severe decline to a point where in all 16 western states, they're considered a species of greatest conservation need. And it's because of numerous interacting threats. You know, Heather talked about habitat loss with grassland nesting birds. And that's the same thing with northern leopard frog habitat. They also suffer from kitred fungus, which may, some of you may know impacts tropical frogs to the point of extinction. They compete with non-native species and that's something that we're trying to manage. Predaceous fish like bass consume their tadpoles and their eggs. American bullfrogs are a huge problem for northern leopard frogs because of direct competition for resources as well as predation. Bullfrogs have been known to eat other bullfrogs, but also northern leopard frogs. And these changes in the hydrologic regime really exacerbate the problem of American bullfrogs. All of our native frogs metamorphose in one season. So they go from eggs to tadpoles to young of the year, all in one growing season, spring to summer. Whereas American bullfrogs need to overwinter as tadpoles. So when you have these gravel pits and these permanent water sources, it really favors these non-native amphibians. Next slide. So just a little bit about our monitoring program. It began in '06 with 40 wetlands surveyed and we use our extensive vegetation mapping to kind of focus our efforts to the highest quality wetlands. But since then, since we've learned more and more about the distribution and abundance of leopard frogs, we've expanded the program, the monitoring program to 141 wetlands. And usually these are surveyed multiple times per summer. So it is a lot of staff effort, but we found out that learning more about the distribution and abundance of northern leopard frogs really helps us drive our habitat restoration and management because we know where the frogs are, they have high site fidelity. And so if we improve the habitat conditions at those sites, we're better, but having direct benefits to leopard frog breeding success. So a couple of restoration techniques that we use is non-native vegetation removal. We remove a lot of cattail from these, these wetlands and increase habitat heterogeneity by planting native vegetation. We do use cattle on a prescriptive basis. We find that in some areas, the cattle do a great job of knocking down the cattail tubers and really impact that shoreline habitat in a good degree by making these kind of microhabitat hoofprints that hold water a little bit more often than other shorelines that don't have hoofprints. We do remove predaceous fish on occasion. We pumped ponds before to remove predaceous fish from that pond as a reset. And then we do manage bullfrogs at select sites. You can see in the upper right-hand corner with a bullfrog with a bird in its mouth. I mean, some of these bullfrogs that we've removed are the size of a softball or a basketball. And you could just imagine the amount of impact that something like that, how much it eats would have on the aquatic community. Next slide. So here's just a bit of a case study to let you know what we're trying to do in terms of our habitat restoration for northern leopard frogs. This is what we call Wanaka Spring Pond. It is just south of the Enrell site, just north of, sorry, south of Highway 128. So this is a monotopic stand of cattails in the fall after the cattails have to nest and turn brown. Next slide. So what we've done is team up with other folks in the department that are interested in doing something different for a day. These are, this is kind of an all-staff workday where we've had trails folks help us. We're in the water with waders and underwater weed whips. It's kind of a reciprocating saw to remove the cattails, to cut the cattails underwater. Because what we found is if you cut and remove the cattails underwater, cattails require the stalk to be above water in order to breathe and grow the next year. So if you're able to cut them underneath the water and actually inundate the cattails, they'll perish. Next slide. So here's what it looks like after we've cleaned it all up, removed the cut cattails. You can actually see the open water, the pond. This is a spring-fed pond that we've identified as potentially having high-quality leopard frog habitat, even though we hadn't seen frogs there before. It's just in the southern grasslands with good habitat potential. Next slide. And so the next spring, I don't know if you can see those green circles, but you see the low-emergent vegetation come up from the pond. And we had three leopard frog egg masses at that site. And I think I've zoomed in photo next. So yeah, this is what leopard frog egg masses look like. They attach them to these low-emergent vegetation coming up in March and April before there's kind of a monotopic stand of stuff. But this has been really encouraging just to, you know, put our effort into clearing out some of these spring-fed ponds of monotopic stands of cattails and the frogs, the frogs find it and breed in there. Next slide. Just another one, this is what we call Springbrook North. It is just east of the Fowler Trail up on the Lindsay property. You'll see in the left side there that there's two technicians actually standing on a cattail mat where the pond should be. And so we came in with an excavator and removed the cattail mat and opened up the water a bit. The cattail mat was probably the size of your arm. It was probably about two and a half feet thick. So you could, you could stand on it, but actually jump up and down and it would move. It was pretty interesting. But anyway, we, we used the excavator to open up the pond, next slide, and did some planting. And the next, the next year, we had leopard frog egg masses at that site. And so, you know, really some of these really fruitful efforts by OSMP staff to kind of restore habitat for a native sensitive species. Next slide. So here's a graph from '06 to 2020. Blue is the number of sites supporting northern leopard frogs on the system. And orange is the number of northern leopard frog breeding sites. And you can see right when our habitat restoration began, you know, you kind of see an upward trends of number of sites with leopard frogs. But I think what we're trying to key in is the number of breeding sites because that is what they need to, to experience sufficient recruitment to maintain the population. They kind of have the 1 to 100 rule for amphibians and leopard frogs particularly. So 100 eggs equals one tadpole and 100 tadpoles equals one young of the year. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of recruitment isn't very good for amphibians. And so we're trying our best to increase the number of leopard frog breeding sites. So this is just on OSMP. And this is, what you're looking at is really all of the leopard frog sites on, in Boulder County on public land. You know, and talking with colleagues at Boulder County Parks and Open Space, they have one site with, that supports northern leopard frogs and no breeding sites. The same with the US Forest Service. Pawnee has a few breeding sites, but that's obviously Weld County. So OSMP really supports or has the property and the management experience to provide high-quality habitat for another sensitive species, northern leopard frogs. And you'll see in that right-hand photo, just a typical leopard frog breeding site. It's ponded ephemeral water, they lay eggs in March and April. It dries up in July and August and by that time they're terrestrial and feeding upland. Next site. So just next steps, we're going to continue monitoring amphibian populations. It is a lot of work for staff effort, but we've found it to be very fruitful to drive our management and our habitat restoration. We'll continue a multifaceted restoration approach at four to six sites because that's, that's all we can kind of handle. We've started along with other land management agencies along the Front Range, Leopard Frog Breeding Working Group. And so we've been able to share our success stories with other land management agencies. And it's been really cool to work with Colorado Parks and Wildlife staff, Four Collins Natural Areas, Jefferson County Open Space, Boulder County Open Space, to just kind of share ideas and experiences. And then just, just recently, we've worked with Colorado Parks and Wildlife on an environmental DNA study. So this involves not knowing that there's frogs there or not and pumping water from a pond through a sieve and then sending that filter, that sieve filter to, for analysis for environmental DNA for a suite of different amphibians. So we've been working together as kind of a pilot study to see at some of our leopard frog sites, how easy is it to detect DNA at these breeding sites? Next slide. So I'm just going to pivot here quickly to our cliff nesting raptor habitat management program. As you know, the Flatirons are world-class climbing destinations, but they also support a really dense population of cliff nesting raptors. We do institute seasonal closures on some of these cliffs and rock formations and have a great relationship with the. um, cliffs uh, and rock formations and have a great relationship with the local access fund um, group, the Flatirons Climbing Council, on managing these closures. Uh, next slide. All of the um, as as Heather alluded to with the Burrowing Owl, but all of the other um species of raptor that we manage for besides the Osprey are either considered tier one or tier two in the Colorado Parks and Wildlife State Wildlife Action Plan, the SWAP, um, as well as considered species of special concern in the Boulder County Count Plan. So these are species that we um, do manage for specifically, uh, either through uh, seasonal closures or fro- for um, you know, dedicated monitoring while other OSMP staff have to enter the closures. Um, so we we do um, focus a lot of our internal energy on managing for these species. Next slide. Um, the role of volunteers in the, in the monitoring program can't be understated. Um, it's, it's, it's awesome. We have between forty and sixty volunteers annually. Um, the past ten years, they've had, they've contributed at least fourteen hundred hours worth of work. Um, I think this year it was up to two thousand. Um, so just a ton of great people out there, very experienced. A lot of them have been with us for twenty-five years. Um, and there are eyes and ears out there. You know, if it was just staff that had to monitor the thirteen to fifteen cliff-nesting raptor sites, um, we'd be swimming to figure out what was going on. And so you know, having these folks up there on a weekly basis really helps us collect this vital information for managing our seasonal closures. Um, we do lift closures on unoccupied territories on May fifteenth. And so again, having these volunteers out there weekly to determine whether a raptor's uh, um, uh, occupy, a raptor pair is occupying a territory really hard, helps our our management of these of these seasonal closures. And you can see from sixteen through this year um, how many closures we have lifted early um, on May fifteenth because we've um, determined that they're unoccupied. One, one note too, um, also um, is that uh, you know, the volunteers and and obviously staff, we we contribute also. But we've identified uh, situations where we've actually had to extend seasonal closures and and two, two of those occasions actually happened this year with the late April snow. We had to extend uh, seasonal closures uh, till about August eleventh from uh, the usual end date of July thirty-first, so about ten days on uh, the Mickey Mouse Wall as well as the third Flatiron. So two very um, important and popular climbing destinations that um we worked with the climbing community to extend the closures to and and we had great um, support. Um, the climbing community was really supportive of it. Um, we worked really closely with them on getting the word out early because we knew that um the late April snow had caused these two peregrine pairs to re-nest. And so they were going to be three or four weeks behind what they usually are. And so we knew in in about June, late June, that we knew we were going to have to extend the closures um, about ten or ten days or two weeks into August. So we got the ball rolling on that early and it really paid off in terms of um um, closure um, enactment. Uh, next slide. Um, so this is a lot of data. Um, but one thing to um pay attention to is the fact that the volunteers helped collect this since nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two. You know, they've helped helped collect all of these um, data for these um, raptors. And it's just been amazing to go through such a long-term dataset uh, to look at trends. Um, I, you know, obviously I don't have a pointer here, but I can walk you through this a little bit. Um, you have two time, timeframes, ninety through two thousand and oh one through fifteen. Um, and by year is the number of nesting attempts per year. Uh, nesting success by percent is next, and then productivity. So nesting success is the number of pairs that successfully raised at least one fledgling. And productivity is the number of fledglings per nesting attempt. So these are common metrics in raptor ecology, just to um compare and contrast different populations. Um, you'll see the comparative measures for the prairie falcon in southwest Idaho. Um, the nesting success at fifty-eight percent and we are at eighty-eight percent and sixty-nine percent. And the productivity at two point four seven and we were at two nine six and two eight four. So you know, what this tells me um, in looking especially at the southwest Idaho site, because I'm familiar with it, is the Snake River Birds of Prey National Conservation Area, so it was dedicated just for uh, conservation of raptors. Um, you know, if we're doing better than Snake River Birds of Prey Conservation Area, I think we're doing a great job in managing our raptor habitat. Um, so you can see here in in this kind of a stable population. So you have the nesting success high across year, across timeframes for um, prairies and peregrines, but uh, next slide. What we've seen in the past five years, um, which is pretty intriguing, is the number of uh, peregrine falcon um, nesting attempts increased. They've almost doubled. Whereas the number of prairie falcon nesting attempts has has declined significantly. And we're seeing this um elsewhere in the western United States. We had a raptor conference uh, just yesterday where I presented this. And they're seeing this in Nevada and in California and in Idaho. So I, at a larger, at a larger scale than us because you know, they have their, their state biologists, but um eh, very intriguing to kind of see this um this competition between peregrines and and prairie falcons. You also see kind of a decrease, a stark decrease in nesting success and productivity and and that, and that's for reasons known to us. And 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 really, these past five years, we've had really um, three years of of late April snow where we've had um, abandoned nests, um, a a higher number of abandoned nests than in years past. Next slide.
So one other species that I I didn't want to not mention tonight, because I know you've you've all been talking about them and hearing a lot about them and a lot of the South Boulder Creek conversations is the Prebble's Meadow Jumping Mouse. And and they are a threatened species federally under the Endangered Species Act. They're also a riparian obligate, meaning they, they live only along riparian areas and associated habitats um, along streams. And they do occupy many of the foothills and plains drainages on OSMP um, below about seven thousand feet. And there is um, federally designated critical habitat along South Boulder Creek and Springbrook. Um, and as you can see from this picture, they're also very charismatic and extremely cute little critters. Next slide. Um, and so what the wildlife staff does with Prebble's Meadow Jumping Mice is um, we do monitoring and with something like, and my dog is howling, which is perfect timing. I apologize. She'll stop. Um, the only way to to monitor small mammals like prebles is through um, live trapping surveys. And so we've done two different types of surveys. Ones are actual population measurements where we're trapping at two different portions of the summer, marking individuals, and then doing a mark recapture study to get actual population measurements. And then on some of our um, less, less heavily occupied drainages or drainages where we don't know for sure if they have um, Prebble's mice, we're doing presence-absence monitoring. Um, we also have a lot of um, effort into compliance with Prebble's regulations, um, because especially post-flood, so much of the damage was along riparian areas that were occupied or at least potential habitat for prebles. There's a lot of permitting and consultation with Fish and Wildlife Service that we've been involved in. Um, as well as um, coordination with project managers, um, looking at designs, um, working with consultants. If if it's a consultant design and and giving recommendations on protecting prebles and their habitat. Um, and as well as direct protection and habitat restoration. So looking at planting of shrubs, um, restoration of areas after construction, working with agricultural staff on grazing plans to increase prebles habitat. And so it it involves a lot of coordination, not only internally, but then also with Fish and Wildlife Service, um, Boulder County Parks and Open Space, um, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And um, currently we're involved in a new effort that's underway to look at the watershed-level conservation of of the prebles um, as part of the species recovery plan. And I'll, I'll certainly be returning with more information on that as I have it um, ready to share. Next slide. Oh, and I, I forgot to mention, we had our board cameo there in that lower picture. They've got to come out with us many, many years ago and hold the prebles.
Um, so uh, just a couple more projects to to introduce you to, and and obviously we can come back if, if the board would like to hear more about it, but um, another data analysis sprint that we're able to work with Brian Anaker on was analyzing an eighteen-year dataset on um, Coal Creek Songbirds. In nineteen ninety-nine, we were able to um, get funding to um fence the riparian area of Coal Creek north of highway one twenty-eight to exclude cattle. Um, and because of this and and during this, we um we were, we had the opportunity to work with Boulder County Audubon Society and and their volunteers, another volunteer program to conduct summer surveys to um, assess changes in the songbird community as as the cattle were were being excluded. So that we had one year of of um, before uh, the fence went up and then seventeen years afterwards. And again, it turned into an eighteen-year time series dataset and we used some focused time uh, last fall, uh, and it was pre-COVID now um, to sit down and and analyze uh, these data. So we had eighty-three species detected, which was really cool for riparian area, um, a high abundance of um, all sorts of birds, shrub nesters and canid meat nesters and ground nesting birds. But what I want to um, highlight to you is just that upper right um, graph, and that's the shrub nesting bird abundance. And you'll see the increase in abundance as um, as time went on. Uh, so as, as the, as cattle were excluded from the corridor and and I did you know, introduce you to um, the leopard frogs um, actually liking cattle in some of their habitat. So it is, it is a mixed um a mixed management effort with with cattle. But um, you could see the increase in the shrub nesting bird abundance, and and that's largely really due to the increase in shrub habitat along the riparian corridor. And one of the interesting things that we found in analyzing these data was um, that it was, it kind of plateaued out um, and um, I don't know, what is that, two thousand eleven or twelve? Um, so we're finding that even though we had this in, this really um um, obvious increase in shrub nesting birds uh, abundance in the Coal Creek Riparian Corridor, we may be experiencing kind of a level that is uh, becoming plateaued. Uh, next slide. Another one that we've just started to pilot this year was um, a soundscape project. So you know, there is a direct uh, tier three um, strategy in there about reducing impacts from noise. And what you'll see on the right is a um we, we talked with uh, the lab at CSU and the, and the night, natural sounds, nice skies division and National Park Service and developed this um this recording device. So it's, it's recording noise, ambient noise, audible noise for twenty-four hours straight, for thirty days straight, following a protocol from NPS. And the thing on top is an anemometer so that they, you can kind of um uh, zipper, they call it um uh, the, the wind data with the sound data. So you can throw out um, times where it's too windy to actually um, analyze the noise. So as I said, it's a pilot project uh, that we're still trying to kind of learn more about noise on OSMP. We, we chose two sites. One off a Bison Drive on the backside of Flagstaff, and you see that photo here. And then one at White Rocks because um, we have had bald eagles nesting there and we are finding that um, at least in some areas, we've had to stop our songbird surveys to allow um, air airplane noise to, to pass before we resume our, our, our point, our point counts. So um, we're in the beginning stages of the contract, of getting a contract to analyze these data with the listing lab at CSU um, and in conjunction with, with National Park Service. Uh, next slide. So it's interesting when Brian and I started wo- working with NPS staff and and the listing lab, kind of what they what they do to contract, what they report out on in in their summary. So um, we hand them these um, SD cards with all of these data and they go to work on it and follow the protocol that they do on on National Park Service uh, reports, which if you're interested in seeing the reports, just uh, Google the national, national sounds, nice guys. And all of their reports are are online there. But we found it interesting that they, they report on for human-centric thresholds. And and the, their reasoning was it's for National Park Service kind of interpreters. And so they kind of um, they want to see what communication disruption there would be on an, on a um a wildlife program or an education program or an interpretation program. So you'll see these four levels they were, they will report out on uh, when we submit our data to them. Um, over thirty-five decibels is sleep disturbance, forty, over forty-five is the max classroom noise. Over fifty-five is communication disruption at ten meters and over sixty-five is that one meter. So these are the metrics that they will report on. Um, you know, we also have an interest in understanding impacts to wildlife, although it's, it's a fairly well, it's a fairly nascent um um, endeavor. Uh, there are a lot of papers out there about um impacts to wildlife on, on road noise and o- oil and gas. Um, but I think it's still too early to kind of tie those together with maybe airplane noise or something along those lines. Um, I did find somewhere on um, on a couple papers that um, a five, five decimal increase in on audible level equals a forty-five reduction in distance prey can detect a predator and seventy percent reduction in search area for a predator. And and obviously this would impact communication among songbirds, so who largely find mates uh, via song. So we're, again, a pilot project. We're, we're trying to kind of jump into it um, at least get our feet wet with the National Park Service analyzing these data and see what they report out on and um, kind of go from there. Um, sorry, next slide. So the last one is just a quick um, jaunt on uh, how we use um, our bat acoustic monitoring to um, to help with forest thinning prescriptions. So you'll see this is the same stand before and after thinning. Uh, you'll see the same tree on the left. Um, so uh, next slide. So what we've done is um we've um, deployed passive acoustic monitoring devices. So there's a unit that records audible noise for the soundscapes. And then there's units that record bat auto uh, echo locations. And so obviously nothing that humans can hear. But um, the monitoring devices do record echo locations as the bats pass. And what you'll see here, this is the same forest stand um, before and after thinning, um, recorded during the same uh, timeframe in twenty seventeen before and twenty eighteen after. And just the mean number of bad passes. So, long story short, there's a, there's two times more bats passing in the same location after uh, the forest has been thin. So we use these data to work with our forest ecologists on um forest prescriptions and uh, amount of canopy cover to remain, amount of canopy to, to be taken out, um, basal area, all of those kind of forest metrics that feed into forest prescriptions that we work with our forest ecologist on in February and and March ahead of their thinning activities in in the summer. And next slide.
And I just want to wrap up by letting you know a couple of things that will be coming to the board in the somewhat near future. Um, we will be doing our prairie dog annual update in January or February. That'll include kind of an update on the species status on OSMP as well as an update on our twenty twenty-one projects and our plans for twenty-two projects. And that'll be following a public meeting in December like we did last year um, to provide information and collect feedback on our plans for twenty-two. Um, I'll also be returning um, probably later next year um, to discuss the mule deer chronic wasting disease study that was completed over the last several years um, to present you with some of the results on the chronic wasting disease portion of the study first, and then um, on some of the habitat use and movement um, from our collared mule deer, probably closer to the end of the year. And certainly, we, we are happy to bring other things back to the board if there is interest there. So um, if if any board members have items that they'd like to hear about, we, we always would love to hear that as they, as they fit into your, your busy agendas. Next slide. And that's all that we have for tonight. So we're happy to certainly answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Heather and Will. Um, really great to see all, all the life out there and uh, all the research and work going on. Uh, do board members have any questions on the presentation? Caroline.
Yeah, I can start off with kind of a, a fun one. Um, what um, part of our system and and when did you see the badger? And then um, is there any follow-up news from, from that video?
Yeah, the, the badgers, we've had a couple of different detections of badgers up in our northern grasslands area. So largely up um, north and west of Boulder Reservoir in general. Um, in a couple of different locations. And actually, the first sighting, which was the first in many, many years on open space, was, I can't remember, Will, how many years ago, but was, was actually a juvenile badger, which was really intriguing. Um, and and we were able to find a, a burrow that time and put up a camera. Um, I don't think that that was actually when we detected the badger on the camera, but then we found another burrow and were able to get that. So we've had scattered sightings, not consistently in one area. So we don't have kind of a follow-up of, yes, we have a resident badger in this area that keeps showing up. But I would say in recent years, we've had more sightings up north than we had in a very, very long time. Will, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Yeah, I think that that film, that camera was from East Beach. So east of Highway thirty-six. But yeah, you're right, Heather. You know, the sightings of badgers are few and far between, and we can't really put our finger on what habitat they're keying in on. So we had one in the southern grasslands a long time ago, and then they've been up in the north. Obviously, they're they're largely sticking to prairie dog colonies. So yeah, it's 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 tough to kind of put your finger on any population status. We actually did pick one up along Highway nineteen. It had been hit by a vehicle. It was seemed like it was caught, this crossing from Belgrove over to east. I forget what the property is east of Highway one nineteen there, but we're going to submit it to C U for for mounting.
And was that a recent event that happened?
Yeah, it was about three and a half weeks ago, four weeks ago.
And when you guys do like locate one on your cameras, I'm sure you call up surrounding partners and say, we just saw one. Is there some sort of system with seeing an animal as unique as the badger to like, maybe if we see one on our property, where surrounding counties or other programs will kind of ramp up efforts to locate them, or or it doesn't quite work like that?
Yeah, I can take that. We definitely notify Colorado Parks and Wildlife and our neighboring land agencies, usually Boulder County Parks and Open Space. But maybe more importantly, we notify O S and P staff because they might, you know, the badge management crew might be out there, then and we're not, we're not seeing that amount of foot traffic on in those areas. So it's it's a little bit more internal notification to keep your eye out for badgers, scrapings, or, you know, something along those lines. So yes, we notify them, but it largely just falls as a notification. It doesn't seem like there's a ton of new effort being conducted after the notification. But, you know, we do, we do have good relationships with CPW as well as our our neighbors in terms of communication.
And I just don't know this, do badgers keep a particular territory or they they're constantly migrant?
They usually do, but we haven't found that here.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing that. That's amazing to see.
I just want to recognize the wildlife group. You know, I think it's the evolution of that group is a real success story and one of the real major positive factors of the Open Space and Mountain Parks Program. And so good, good for all of you. And just as an aside, I did think I recognized that person in the picture holding pebbles. So thanks, thanks for that. But it took me a while.
I think that was right before the mosquitoes carried you away.
Hal, you're on mute.
You're muted, Hal.
I was lip reading.
I said Karen, next. And then just because we're about an hour behind, I know there's more questions to the wildlife crew. We can please submit those to emails. I would love to do this for longer, but we have representatives from the city attorney's office on the line waiting for us. So I do want to expedite. Karen, what do you have there?
I just have two comments and a question. First of all, I think it's absolutely fabulous that you guys are monitoring whole populations and working to enhance habitat for populations of fragile or or indeterminate future populations. And I also want to tell you how wonderful it is to get positive comments from landowners about the prairie dog program and which I have especially today. And I'm very happy to learn that the lovers and the Cushman's are involved in the in the prairie dog work. And as we, as the board recommended, are getting paid for their efforts. So thanks for all that work. My question is, I think, Heather, that you mentioned adding back a wildlife supervisor. Can you just say a sentence or two more about that?
Sure.
Different would differ from your role?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. So prior to my moving into our ecological stewardship supervisor, I supervised the wildlife group. And so I was the direct supervisor of at that time, it was our three standard wildlife staffs and two to three temps. It's now four wildlife staff and two to three temps. In my role as ecological stewardship supervisor, I also supervise the wetland and riparian ecology programs, as well as the grassland ecology programs. And a lot more of my time is focused on kind of department-level work planning, budgeting, planning, you know, coordination across work groups, as well as just supporting that more diverse staff in the three different programs. So you know, I think Will has taken on quite a bit of that work, and I've continued to do a lot of that work. But having somebody who is really completely focused on supporting the wildlife program at a supervisor level is really very helpful. And, you know, frees up somebody in Will's position to be doing more of the work and less of the kind of coordination, budgeting, staffing kind of things that, you know, are really kind of a supervisor level responsibilities.
Thank you.
How can I just make mine really quick? Will, I'm really glad to hear that climbers are behaving themselves and they're honoring the extended periods in which you close for raptor nesting. And I do want to just clarify for one, just one tiny data point. I think you said that you work with a local access fund group to make sure that word gets out. And I just want to be clear for the record that you you work with local climbing organizations and not access fund directly because access fund works on a national level. I work for access fund, and I want to make sure that there's not a perceived conflict of interest, even though I am a climber and I do climb on the flight errands. So tiny, tiny clarification. And then last bit is additional suggestions with getting that that word out is like Twitter to let people know, instead of just working with the local climbing organizations, that the closures have been extended.
Those are two great suggestions. Thanks, Michelle.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Heather, Will. Really great to see you. Yes, outside of the prairie dog discussion. And we look forward to hearing more from you again soon.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Wonderful. With that, we're going to move to matters from the board. We do have a number of people from the city attorney's office and Joe Tadich on the line. I want to be respectful of their time and their willingness to join us here. Dan, I see your finger up.
Yeah, sorry, Hal, and I didn't have it on the agenda. I just wanted to give a very twenty-second update if I could on a on a before we launch into this. It's regarding the Anemone Hill Project, which the board toured. And I just want to alert the public and to you all that coming up in the next week or so, we're going to be instituting a full closure, twenty-four hours, seven days a week for about four weeks while we do the restoration on undesigned trails in the area. And and we get up for the gear up for the final, final stage. That will be lifted after the four-week closure. And then the new system is going to be opened on a limited schedule while we finalize the remaining trail work that is to occur. So just wanted to alert you to this full closure that's coming up for a couple of weeks. But that also signifies that we're really getting close to the end. And we're going to provide you with more in a written update in November about the trail project.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, I will ask, we have prepared written questions and answers that came in email today. And if we could share those on the monitor for this next segment, that would be greatly helpful. Erin, welcome. Thank you. I see you there. I saw Janet moments ago. And for the sake of covering a lot of ground, because I think there'll be some questions after this, I basically proposed that we run down these one at a time. I'll kind of open the conversation. Other board members, please take yourselves off mute. What I'd like to do is have people ready to go and to interject, you know, as we move forward, just to reduce the amount of flipping overtime. So is everybody able to see the document? Great. So for on the first question, appreciate the answer that it was not considered a key change. Of course, you understand from the point of view of this board, because the question being here was perceived as a key change. To my mind, what I see that's important in the answer is that you you confirmed sort of an answer to another question that the board had, which is you also agree that due to the permitting requiring essentially ownership rights to the parcel, that that change created perhaps much ado about not much. And that you are of the belief that it cannot be permitted without disposal.
That's my understanding. And thank you, Board, for having us here tonight and to give us the opportunity to to talk these questions over with you. You know, my my understanding, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to have the flood project, he needs to build a flood wall, and the area where that is proposed to take place would require a disposal from the open space board. And without being able to build that, that would then cause the permits to not issue.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you. And Joe Tadich here, I'm the director of utilities. We're responsible for the flood project and good evening to the trustees. So that that's correct. The you know, on projects, we often pursue permits before we have all of the land ownership components tied down perfectly. And we'll often get a condition of approval on those permits to say that the permit goes into effect once you can demonstrate that you have permission to use the land in one form or another. So if for some reason we didn't have that that permission, then then the it would like, it would be like the permits got nullified or or were not approved.
Okay. And then given that, I'm just curious, was why would C U press for this change, which seems large and important to this board, if it's effectively a non-effective change?
You know, I don't know exactly what they were thinking. They didn't always explain their rationale. But when we separated as teams to discuss it, we did not feel that deleting that language changed the city's position in any meaningful way. So I don't know exactly what they meant by it, but we were comfortable with it, believing that it really didn't affect a meaningful change.
That's a very helpful answer to me. Other board members, anything clarifying in that? Seeing nothing. Okay, how about question two? We wanted to be sure that that basically the the staff understood this board, and actually multiple boards, undertook its work in ultimately the resolution, but frankly, many years that included multiple motions, undertaken with the expectation that the land was going to be a condition. And we likely would not have brought many of those proposals without that. I suppose that ties to your first answer, but I hope that also clarifies why the question is there and was of concern.
And I just want to reaffirm that the disposal process is independent and stands on its own outside of the annexation process. So the board still has its full authority under the charter to create the disposal or not.
Great. That's a helpful point, Erin, and I'd like to come back to it down the list. Essentially, I think what is a little bit confusing for us as well as the community is that if the terms of compensation to the open space department are contained in a closed annexation agreement, was that contemplated by the drafters of the charter, which basically were giving this board and perhaps the public the ability to not just review whether we would give up the land, but we would but that they would be fundamentally interested in what department would receive in exchange for good and valuable, you know, fee simple title?
I'm not sure if I fully follow your question. But I know there's also an ordinance that requires disposal, even if the land transfers to another city department?
Yeah, yes. I wasn't thinking of that. What I was thinking is visualize the disposal that had a public referendum. And then visualize the ballot. Would that ballot and the informational items as visualized by the drafters contain information for the public about what they stand to receive in exchange for what they're going to dispose?
I am not sure what the ballot would contain. Sandra may have information on that, but what the actual wording of the ballot you're talking about in a referendum?
As far as transparency in a referendum process under the open space section of the charter, it would it always, it was like naturally assumed by me and I think other board members that the terms of compensation to the department would be disclosed to the public.
I don't believe that would be on the ballot. You know, if there's a referendum, it means that something would be repealed. So if the open space board voted to approve a disposal, and then that was subject to a referendum, the public would have the option of pulling back that disposal.
The option of pulling back that disposal.
Hal, could I make a recommendation here? I know we said everybody turn their mics off. I think we're getting an echo because of that.
Okay, let me, let me turn.
So perhaps only the speaker will do it, and then we can just kind of do it how we usually do it. Yeah, I think this is, I think that's.
Forgive me. Yep. Okay, that just drilling down on that a little bit further. We currently don't have a interdepartmental memorandum of understanding, and one of the later questions talks about that. The concern, I think, that I'm hearing that I have myself and which I've heard from other board members is adequate transparency on what the actual terms of compensation, final realized terms to the open space department will be in exchange for any potential requested disposal and where and how that transparency takes place.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think it could happen in a couple of ways. One might be a condition attached to the disposal where whatever negotiation or deal that was worked out between open space and utilities to make sure that that was followed. And I would let Janet Michaels or maybe Bethany speak to how those conditional disposals work. I'm not entirely familiar with that process. But that would be one way to do it.
Yeah, thank you. And if I could pitch in here a little bit too. Hal, I believe and trustees, good evening, I'm Janet Michaels with the city attorney's office. There would be transparency in the disposal process itself. That would be a part of the whole package that comes to the OSBT, and that goes to, and if if it's advanced, it goes to the city council for approval. So I might not be understanding your question, but the transparency, I would believe, would come through that process of the disposal.
Yeah, that's that's helpful. So what I'm hearing you say is a completed interdepartmental memorandum of understanding would be brought to this board prior to any request for disposal or along with any request for disposal?
I don't know that we have the timing worked out on that.
Okay, that's that's fine.
Hal, it might be an iterative process. Well, we may come up with a, as part of the, you know, the disposal hearing, we may come up with a draft memorandum of understanding of how it would work. Of course, then we would get the finer details of what the board has decided, which of what the board has decided, which would then need us to cause to go back to uh the draft agreement and fill out those details. And so, you know, it it could be an iterative process as well of starting off with staff, then hearing from board and going back and cleaning up and going to council and so I'm, and I'm just envisioning it here, uh, but I, it it could be that iterative process as well.
Any other board members with clarity or thoughts or concerns on any of that? Great. Um, I I for one will say that um all along the way uh in this process, there has been discussion about net benefit to the open space department. And it really just remains to be seen. We 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 understand that this process is is sort of a living creature. And I think a lot of the indigestion that we're seeing comes from the accelerated pace decided by the city council, which really departed from the expectations that we were originally given. And so that pushes forward sort of our desire to understand what those timelines look like and when any full package of compensation will be placed in written form for digestion and and transparency by the board and ultimately frankly by the public.
Hal, I I could, I could speak to the next steps and 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 our next conversations, which is December 1st. So uh, how staff is viewing it as that we need to provide you, utility staff needs to provide you with more details about flood project itself, which was envisioned in in the 20, I believe it was the September 2019 OSBT motion that basically laid out that around, we need that 30% design information to know more about what the impact could be uh, and other elements of the project. Groundwater, of course, was was iterated. And so uh, utility staff is is geared up to begin to provide you with that next level of information. Lot, information on 30% design, information on groundwater. So right now, we're not envisioning a disposal conversation in the near term simply because we know that this next level down of information is important to the board and we view that as our next step.
Okay, I I and I appreciate that, Dan, and I know that you'll appreciate too, that that's a little dissonant with the idea that there's an emergency underway. Uh, Karen, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, in keeping with that uh exchange, um, Dan, can you just say something? I I've been asked by community members about what's going on with the underground flow uh data collection, and I know it's been postponed another six months. Can you just say what's going on and why the continued postponements of the underground flow information?
Yeah, that that, Joe, I think that's going to be your question because our staff's not involved in leading that.
Yeah, and actually, I I'm, I'm not aware of a of six month delay. I, our intent is to provide that information in the December study session with the board and the.
Well, last time we were notified, though, it was going to be done in in the summer.
Okay, well, and I I have, I have missed that detail, but it, the the information I have from Brandon, who's who's on, he's just added a a new family member recently and is on family leave, but uh, is back to working part-time. Uh, we'll be presenting the the baseline groundwater information in that study session as well as the 30% design. And just to follow up on the, on the exchange uh previously, we would envis, we, utilities would be the entity that would be initiating a disposal request like we've done for other projects and is somewhat routine and a common occurrence. And all of that information, like the MOU and and the the detail would be part of an initial presentation that we would would do to the board. And typically, uh, when we've come in the past, we've had an initial exchange of information. The board has given us feedback and uh requested us to come back with additional information prior to a decision. So that's kind of the normal course of business that we've followed for a disposal. And one of the things that I I wanted to say is that it is our intention to just follow that normal process for a disposal and um, that's the path we're on. Until we have a little bit more development of the design, we wouldn't be in a position to have those conversations in in earnest with the board or with any of the other permitting agencies. For example, the, how the flood wall ties into US 36 at the down by South Boulder Creek and and getting a permit from CDOT, what that footprint would would look like would be really relevant information to the board. That's the kind of detail we're working on now and and we would need that.
And and that sounds like the original process I've been hearing about for two years. Um, what what I think has changed is, can you please comment on what we heard at the council meeting about the emergency for the purposes of beginning permitting application processes? Were the people making those comments misinformed?
No, I I don't feel that they were and um spent, spent a bit of time describing to council in the Q and A my perspective on where that was coming from. And probably the most complex of the landowner agreements we have is is with the university. And working through the details with them. There, there's so much interaction between their property and our flood project, including the inundation area where they can put recreation facilities. Uh, yeah, I I'm sure everyone's aware, lots of discussion around earth fill uh, to provide them the, the same development area that they started with before our project. And then a really key component of that was pinning down the 119 acres of open space, which was our step for our staff team. Getting that open space and the water rights to go with it was one of our primary goals. We needed that to be able to say to the permitting agencies, to the public and to the, to this board. This is, this is how we're going to mitigate the impacts of the flood project. So having, having all of that pinned down was critical and thus the urgency of it. If we were continuing to leave, leave it open to further negotiation and further discussion and it was still spinning, we would just be in a perpetual loop. So that's really the trigger for all of these other things to go forward. I realize that may not be a satisfactory answer for everybody, but that's genuinely how I see it.
I I certainly think it takes a lot of pressure off us knowing that there won't be an attempt to put us on an emergency timeline. And that this emergency actually wasn't about beginning permitting. Good, good for people to understand that.
Um, just to back up a minute, I didn't want to interrupt anyone. Has there ever been any captured data of groundwater studies in this area? Ever from any department?
Yeah, so I I can speak to that. Part of what we're doing and have been doing for the past couple of years is uh putting monitoring wells in so that we could establish the baseline conditions uh, for a couple of years through different seasons of the year. There's irrigation, you have dry dry years, wet years, and just to establish those baseline conditions. And the intent of the design team is then to um come up with a design and be able to model and demonstrate with our design that we can match those baseline conditions. So there's, there's, there's been a lot of monitoring that's been done for the past few years and that'll be part of the information that gets presented in December.
And um, by a few years, if you, if you don't have the exact number tonight, that's fine, but you know when those studies um began?
I don't have the exact number, but I believe it's, my best recollection is it's, it's at least two years. We'll, we'll have that for you in December in detail.
Thanks, Karen. Um, returning back just to the questions quickly, I think number three, we can sort of skip over now and summary by saying that because the permitting will actually be the primary condition of interest, that perhaps this was an ill, ill-conceived tweaking of the language in the de-annexation clause. And therefore, um, a citizen referendum which denied the disposal would likely also deny the ability to permit the project, still retain city, city council's ability to not give away all annexation without gaining anything. Is that a fair statement? Is that a fair statement?
I I don't know that it's fair, but I think some of it is factual. That city council has the discretion to require de-disconnection by CU.
Require de-disconnection by CU.
Can you say a little bit more about?
I think Karen was asking a follow-up question.
Can you describe what the, the last line in 3A means?
I, I, yes, so if if there's no disposal.
If there's no disposal.
Then permits would not be issued. And if if there are not permits issued, then it comes back to council in their discretion whether or not to foresee you to disconnect. So council can consider at that time, you know, is there, is there a design solution that would allow the flood wall to be placed somewhere out? So it's council's discretion, but if council asks for disconnection of CU, they are required to go through that process.
Great.
What does disconnection mean?
That's the de-annexation process set by state statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that also leads into question 3B, which is should the citizens um gather signatures and initiate a referendum? And a disposal is overruled by a democratic act. The council, due to the permits in their relevance, the council will still have an option to save the community from having no flood mitigation and CU having all the benefits of annexation. Is that a correct reading?
I I'm not sure I I followed your reading. If if the open space board makes a disposal and that is repealed by referendum, then uh, then we're in the position of possibly not being able to fulfill the requirements of the annexation agreement with the permits. Um, and so in in that scenario, council could demand that CU disconnect, but it is in their discretion.
Great, okay, that's really helpful, thank you. Um, question four has to do with a a sense and perception that the removal of the land, albeit not the permits, um, is is basically a just diminishment of our local environmental review under federal review. Can, can you speak to that?
I can't speak to the permitting and and how, I, I don't believe that the open space board authority has changed because of the annexation agreement, because disposal is fully independent of the annexation agreement.
Okay, let let me ask a follow-up there. If, if, if imagine a situation where a disposal cannot be achieved either by the approval of this board or by referendum. The um, city, the city council has the ability to either initiate de-annexation or not initiate de-annexation. And um, as a result, it's, it's net no difference whether it happens due to the inability to permit the project or gather the land. You you see why this is confusing?
It it is. It, so regardless of why a permit can't be obtained, whether it's the land or it's some other criteria set by the permit that the city was unable to fulfill. You know, if if the, if we can't successfully, or Joe can't successfully obtain the necessary permits, yeah, then then it it could, it could come apart.
That that addresses, I think, a big concern of at least certain board members, myself included, which is to be comfortable with the idea of a disposal, knowing that the city charter is operating as intended and doesn't put the voters in a position where their only option in in executing their thoughts about the endangered species and the value of the environment is to scuttle only the life safety project with no recourse to ever regain any leverage related to the ownership of the parcel. Which, which in my mind would essentially be a worst possible case outcome for the citizens and taxpayers of Boulder. So does it, do other people follow that on this call or agree with that? Knowing, knowing if there is a successful referendum under the open space section of the charter allows council to have the opportunity to dig out of what could be a fantastic economic hole is an essential piece of knowledge, at least to me, to provide my support to a disposal.
Disposal was was always considered to be a project risk.
To be a project risk.
Thank you.
I, Hal, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. Can you try to say it a different way?
Yes. Um, it would be very difficult for me in good conscience, no matter how good the annexation agreement compensation to open space was to vote for a disposal, if I thought it would send up, set up a situation under the charter referendum where the action of the voters could do exceptional financial harm to the city of Boulder. And be, and feel like I was a participant in that process. So knowing that the city council at least has an option in that circumstance to address that harm is critical to me seeing that it's a benefit to the city. And that, does that make sense? Is that a better way of explaining it?
Hal, are you trying to say of you, you, you want to avoid a situation where there's, there's, disposal was not given for one reason or another, utilities can't do the project and who gets the annexation agreement still and there's no recourse, is that?
I'm I'm more worried the, the pace of signature gathering now for two referendums on this issue has been so successful that I think anyone who doesn't expect a third one under the open space charter isn't making an adequate assessment of what's going on out there. If that gets on the ballot and people choose to uh overrule the disposal. If city council doesn't have an option to de-annex the property, it puts, it puts everyone involved as a participant in grave harm to the city of Boulder. The fact that you are now making the case doing, due to the permitting, waive the, 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 the item of land that was in the original clause, that they still do have that option, that goes a long way with me in raising my confidence that this process isn't that goes a long way with me in raising my confidence that this process isn't, isn't essentially trying to scare the community and this board into a predetermined outcome.
If I can weigh in here, I think that goes back to one of my initial statements in, in the evening here that if we don't have the right to use the land and the open space is one of the landowners that would have to grant that, then we can't get, then the permits can't go into effect and, and, and we don't have a project. And so the, the de-annexation clause would be right there in front of.
That's, I really, this is hugely helpful to me, Joe, because for a moment there, we thought that this change, which was deemed not key, had completely altered that landscape.
That, that's not the case.
It's, it's great that we're having that in this discussion and in this written response. Um. Regarding the city council meeting, this, this question probably was better directed at council. I think I can leave it here. It just feels that when you're looking for the help and assistance of another body or board, that not talking about all the different ways that you might go about changing the law to get around them would be helpful. Needless to say, it was premature and it doesn't, it's, it's, in, in the parlance of city council, it's not helpful. So I think unless any other board member has anything else on that one, that's where I'm, I'm willing to leave that.
And if I, if I can chime in one more time and you can tell me to stop, again, going back to something I said initially, our intention is to follow the normal disposal process. And we do not have any direction and no one is talking to us about doing anything else. And for, I, I will just say beyond that, for me as the utilities director, our two departments are going to have to work together on a lot of things in the future. So it is our intention to work with the department staff and the board in good faith to try and sort of figure this out.
Thank you, John, I appreciate that. Um, for, for my purposes on question six, the idea that these are concurrent is very valuable. I know a couple other board members were interested in this. Basically, what I'm seeing, Joe, is we're going to hear more from you later in the stage, just like more granular about this. But the bottom line is, is multiple permits need to be progressed simultaneously. And that a disposal is likely required before any of them begin.
The, I agree with everything except that last part. I, I think the disposal is, is one of the approvals or permits that we will need to pursue. And the most recent thing that we did that was similar to this was the Carter Lake Pipeline a few years ago. And that is a city water supply pipeline that comes in from hygiene into our Boulder reservoir plant. It caught, it crossed a lot of city open space interests kind of adjacent to 75th and things like that. Now, in that case, Northern Water was the, was the managing the project and they went after all the permits. But when we got to that point, their consultants started preparing permit applications and, and we went through a disposal discussion with the open space staff and the board. And, and those all just, all of that happened concurrently. We certainly would be looking at the ones that would have the most lead time. And I think some of the information that we would be preparing in general for a lot of the permits would also be of interest to the board. And, and we would be providing that as we're bringing forth a disposal.
Thank you for that. Are, are permit applications public record or public knowledge? Like, for example, if I wanted to pick any of these entities and, and go online and, and try and pull up what a permit application would look like, could I do that or is, would the permit be privileged?
No, absolutely, those are typically available to the public. And some of the agencies have public notice processes. And I, we haven't really talked about it, but I would envision that we would be putting those materials on our website as well as we're, on our project website as we're preparing them and submitting them.
Thank you.
Okay, on question seven, I think, um, the, the thing I'm seeing, at least in my email and other places, is concern about when and how the baseline is established. And what I'm understanding from your answer is CU is in control of when that baseline is established. The baseline will only be determined at such time as they make known their intent to build recreation or event, or event facilities. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is, is the city at all concerned about CU being in control of our baseline study?
No, because until they take action there, we, we believe the, the current conditions will continue. And it isn't until they plan to do something that would alter current conditions that then the requirement for the independent third party baseline study would be triggered.
Karen, I know that this was an issue of close attention for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about, was that Janet who just spoke?
It was Erin.
Or somebody else. I'm concerned about other development activities being initiated at the CU South property. Um. And therefore potentially changing the baseline before CU says, we're going to construct recreational event facilities. I don't understand why, um, one would wait until CU indicates an intent to construct a, a specific type of facility when they're constructing other facilities from the beginning.
CU intends to have a phased plan.
CU intends to have a phased plan.
So the, the recreation facilities would be the only thing that could be built during the de-annexation period? So nothing, none of those can be built until that study takes place. And so that, that would be the first construction on the site.
So then I guess like the, the forward and, and kind of obvious question would be, why would one of the city's departments not begin a study now in their own?
Yeah.
I think expense is, is probably part of it. That it's intended to be a shared expense.
That it's intended to be a shared expense.
Was that ever brought up or discussed in the?
I, I don't recall.
Well, I am concerned that, um, that the baseline study is being delayed.
Good evening, board. Maybe I could just add to that a little bit. We, we have not, we have still catching our breath. From the annexation, we have not approached CU staff about that topic yet. And we could certainly have a conversation with them and see what their intent is around this, the study and the timing of that. We have conveyed to them at the staff level that such a study might take a year or more to complete before they would be able to build anything. So certainly getting that negotiated and squared away at a, an early enough time would be in their interest as well as the cities.
Thanks, John. I relate to the, the analogy of breath catching. This, this discussion right now is certainly helping us all catch our breath. Um. So that, so, so we talked, we, we kind of jumped forward question. And if anybody else has anything additional on that, please, but.
You know what, can I just add one thing? Um, in regards to that, whomever it would be, whether boards or departments, if, I'm sure there's a way, if, if cost is the issue, if there's a way for us to have a better understanding of what's involved for the design study, if that's an area of concern that could be an issue moving down the road. I think that having a, a good understanding of, of what is required for that and, and the involvement, whether time or financials, might perhaps be a good idea to disclose. And, and then from there, maybe or maybe not, something could be done.
And also that.
Like if they don't just, if they don't want to build something until 20 years down the road. Which, you know, who knows when that could actually happen? And to do it in 2021 for something that won't happen till 2041. That echoes hard. Um. I, I mean, I think like, yeah, front loading that expense, not knowing whether they're actually going to develop something or when they're going to develop something, or what would that something be? Um, knowing, John, that you've put that stake in the ground that, look, we're going to need a year. So whenever you think you may have a plan or an idea, you, you, we better get this study going. But they're not going to be able to do anything until the study is completed.
Correct, and I think you're right, Michelle.
I think you're right, Michelle.
The, the concern, or a concern that CU would have or may have is that there may be other impacts from surrounding developments such as, you're just, you know, use such as US 36 or elsewhere. It could impact noise and light on the state natural area separate entirely from what they may do. And so to establish a baseline now may not relate to what impacts they would have from their development, say 10 years from now or whenever that would be. I, I think that's just going to be part of the conversation when we start talking about this.
So could the IGA be agreed to now so that the steps are clear and the responsibilities are clearly laid out? And how the study gets triggered? And the amount of time required for the study are all laid out in the IGA? And the use of that study in terms of preventing degradation of impact on the state natural area?
I, I think there would be some merit to, to having that conversation, Karen, and seeing if, if we could work something out, given staff capacity and ability to undertake further negotiation at this point. We can certainly take a run at that. And I, I think that's, that's not a bad idea to try to do that. May not be possible, but we can certainly try, we can certainly look into trying that.
Thank you, John. Um, yeah, I think many of these things boil back down to just timeline and, and feeling a little whipsawed by the idea that there is an emergency related to getting permitting going. When it appears we are in fact largely on the same schedule that we have been accustomed to being on since the beginning. So I imagine there'll be time to flesh out both the ID MOU and the IGA and their relative timing and initiation. Um. I, I will say for one, because I've done a lot of thinking about this. Um, I don't know what it is about being an elected official versus an appointed one. And the difference in your responsibilities of what you're doing for the city. And in our case, our board, which is primarily to oversee the health and security of the open space department. But, and, and I don't want to speak for any other board members, so I'm willing to speak for myself. Although, although I do think this idea is shared. And that is, is that I have no interest whatsoever in trying to alter any democratic ability for this decision to be reviewed by the public. And as a matter of fact, I'm more interested in winning the confidence of the public through a well thought out process that actually does create net benefit for open space, convincing the public of that, and then having the transparency available. I understand everything in, in the answers that you give me about the permitting are complete breath of fresh air. But I'll just say, my personal impression is something went on behind the scenes where people thought they were going to turn this into a fait accompli related to the functioning of the charter. And it failed basically by not doing the work that they thought they had done. So I, I want to say clearly and beyond all doubt that for me as a board member, anything that feels like a gerrymandering or altering of the democratic process is of no interest to me. And maybe that's because I'm appointed and not elected. But trying to avoid democratic review of this project will not be a priority of mine. I don't know if any other board members feel the same way. They can comment or not, but I just want to make the utmost clarity about that. That if there's going to be a project in a flood wall, it should be one on the competence of the public, that it is a holistic and, and beneficial deal for the city of Boulder, Colorado. Does anybody else have any final questions or comments that they would like to share? Wonderful. This was extremely helpful. Your time here and the clarification especially about permitting and land and the technical functioning of this is extremely reducing to anxiety. Greatly appreciated. And certainly clarifications, Joe, on what the outlook on the general timeline is here and that we can expect a, a fulsome review of the underground water issues. This really is helpful, I think, to all of us. So I, I really thank you. Great. Unless anybody else has anything further, I just want to thank you really for providing your time tonight. We're, we're going to continue on. We've got more matters here. But you've been around with us for a long time. And again, just thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the time tonight, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, staff from other departments for coming by, spending some time with us, really appreciate it.
Okay, so turning, turning back to our agenda, folks, we are now looking at the OSPT Retreat Subcommittee update. We have Dana and Caroline, I think, on that with us.
Well, that would be Dave and Caroline.
Excuse me, excuse me, Dave.
I, I will, I'll, maybe I'll just make a brief note before they start. As hopefully all of you've got a email that I sent out either Monday or Tuesday with latest thinking of the, of the agenda. We put a lot of details underneath the headings to give you a better sense of, of, of the conversation that Dave and Caroline. of, of the conversation that Dave and Caroline were envisioning based on some feedback they got from the rest of the trustee. So we know it's sort of a lot of information that we gave you, but at the same time, we thought it was helpful and hope, hope it was helpful to give you a better sense of, of the envisioned conversation. So in green, in that draft where Dave worked on some desired outcomes that were, that Dave's and Caroline were looking for and as well as some questions. And so anyway, I just wanted to, if anybody didn't get that, then let me know and I can send it back out, but the timing is such that in order to get things a little retreat packet together for you and, and out this week, we're really hoping that we could finalize this tomorrow morning and work with Leah in the afternoon before we leave on the, in the day Thursday to actually get the agenda out and a few other pieces of information out to you and, and post it as well.
Yeah, let me jump in real quickly and then Caroline, you, you, you clean up. So what we are interested in this conversation tonight with the board is any questions or suggestions that you have. As Dan said, we tried to provide as much detail as we could on, on the various topics that we thought were of interest for this retreat. So we're open to any further comments or suggestions that you have and, and we'll try to incorporate those. Having said that, I think the, the timing, you know, there, I think a lot of important issues and, and topics that we thought we should at, at least talk about. So the timing was a bit of a concern and hopefully we've, we've built enough time in that we can have good discussions and, and some productive outcomes, but we would welcome any further suggestions or questions that, that all of you have before we go final on this.
Yeah, can I ask more some logistical questions? I am, one has to do with just the actual schedule and then the other has to do with what homework should we do other than reading the materials we should do in advance? I just want to make sure I'm clear what, how I should prepare. Other than, you know, thinking, thinking through some of the things, should I jot some things down? Should I, I know that we can't share them openly before then. But would you suggest taking, like taking some notes on each of these topics before we even get there or having it be more of a and the free flowing conversation during the actual retreat?
Yeah, I think we thought it as more of a free flowing conversation. I think, so just to give you a little organizational perspective, I think the first session in the morning was, was seen as kind of a, you know, intro, warm up, let's make sure we, you know, take care of, you know, the low hanging fruit, if you will, and, and prepare for, you know, some more substantive and probably comprehensive discussions later. And so what I was, what Caroline and I were going to do is once we've gotten feedback tonight and kind of cleaned up everything and gotten the final out was to ask various board members if they would be interested in taking some of the session, parts of the session or parts of the parts and lead the discussion. So if you are interested in leading some of the conversation on these topics, we would welcome your letting us know and we will also ask some of you if you would be willing to do that. And what I think we're mindful of is kind of the initial suggestions that we got from the board early on that kind of set the foundation for this. And so we want to make sure that if you suggested something that you wanted to see on the agenda, that if you're willing to serve in leading that conversation, that would be great. Caroline and I see our roles as kind of, you know, overarching and just making sure that we're, you know, on schedule and, and in getting done what we've all agreed that we'd like to do, but we don't see ourselves as necessarily leading every topic discussion and would prefer actually other board members to participate since this is our retreat and that participation would be certainly welcome.
Dave, I've got a small ask on that. During the consideration of OSPT rules, I, I, I would, at least I have a suggestion, if not lead the conversation. I have a suggestion I'd like to make in a small request for homework. That homework is if everybody could just reread both the recent letter that you and Karen wrote to the newspaper. And also just a few days ago, there was a letter from Mayor Sam Weaver and Councilwoman Mary Young, written by two people, members of the same board and placed in the newspaper. If people would read both of those, I think it would, it would help people understand where I'm going in the conversation and, and the update that I may suggest to the rules.
That would be fine.
Okay.
I don't know if folks have that. I think if you go on the camera website, you can pull both of those items up. I don't have the specific dates, but I think if you use the names.
It would be really helpful if, it would be really helpful if somebody could just attach those to the agenda rather than having five of us search around and try to find.
I will send the links to you, Dave. How's that?
Here and if you put your, I think your, there you go. That would be great, Hal.
Excellent.
And so we'll include those.
I just, I thought I'd make, just add that back to some of Michelle's conversation. There's a couple of these topics in which staff will be doing a, a brief and, and, and we worked through that definition of brief with Dave and Caroline, sort of a primer in the beginning of a couple of the topic areas. And so that might help too, sort of to kickstart questions and conversation as well. But the intent is not to dominate the agenda item at all. It's, it's, it's really to help provide context to the subject matter. So a couple of these things will have a little staff portion of it, but fairly, fairly minor.
Yeah. So I think if any of you want to, you know, be further informed or prepared. Yeah. Let us know kind of what you would like, but I think we put at the end kind of what the packet will consist of, and we're trying to make sure that we're providing information in the packet, which will help the conversations during the retreat.
Yeah. And, and Dave, just a clarification. So there will be some information that will go out tomorrow with the agenda. And then based on the fluidity of coming up with this, there'll be pieces of information that will trickle out between Thursday and Tuesday. So we'll, you know, we're doing our best to definitely put some things together tomorrow and others will make their way to you in the ensuing days. So just kind of monitor your email and because you could be getting information early next week as well.
And I think just to kind of add a bit to that, what we'll be discussing with that is a lot of like interpretation of, of how we see this as, as a board together. So as of late, I, I think it would also be helpful to really take a look at our charter and see if that can kind of help the discussion and, and see if there's any interpretations in there. I knew that there were a few things in the charter that as of late, it kind of, I read it differently than I had, you know, in, in the prior year. Just so that might be another document, just to kind of look through another time and, and, yeah.
Great. Karen, I saw your hand up. I know you've got something and I wanted to suggest something to you also, which is I know we are, there was a comment in public comment about the written information, which we're scheduled to discuss next. But if you could paint the picture, how the written memo and the retreat dovetail, I think that'd be helpful.
I wanted to go to two suggestions in the agenda that was sent out requesting comments. Whether those comments from me have been received and discarded or whether they're live or whether there's something we need to decide on tonight. I, I just need to know what the status of my two suggestions are for the agenda itself.
They've been received and I think we're incorporating them.
I have it to incorporate it unless there was any reason why I wouldn't, but I was planning to incorporate it to be part of the final agenda.
Right. So I think, I think, yeah, we're, we're going to make sure they.
And like with, like with, like with Hal, do you need from me the document for the Boulder Dialogue Items so that as Michelle suggested, we can all read it over before the retreat?
Karen, that would be fine. My understanding though is
I, I see it as one of those things that Michelle has been referring to that we read about before, but that we don't spend time at the retreat reading or discussing it point by point, but reading it in preparation as background.
Okay.
Karen, if you have a specific piece of information you want to include it either in a packet or that we could get out between the packet and the board meeting, emailing that to Leah and myself. Leah is the one that would be helping me sort of compile everything so that, that could help expedite it.
Karen, if you've got something you can.
Okay. I thought I, I thought I may have attached that. I thought I may have attached that document.
Okay, I'll, I'll review it and.
To the suggestion.
And I can forward, I can forward it to him. And Hal, I, I wasn't sure who you were addressing your question to. So coming back to that, it was that a question to Caroline and, and me or?
I guess both to you and also to Karen. All I know is after we feel we've, we've discussed the, the Subcommittee Update, we're, we're going to look at a piece of written information related to Voice Insight and Adaptive Management, which is also a topic for the retreat. And just making sure that we're putting ample transparency on that, you know, being in this public meeting, having the written information and alerting the public to the fact that this is a topic in the retreat. Unless I understand this wrong, these are related topics, correct?
Yeah, let me just speak to that real quickly. The conversation tonight will be on a specific management action under Voice Insight. The, the conversation at the retreat will be more general and encompassing about the Voice Insight Program itself. And so it will include a number of different components to the program, to the Voice Insight Program. So tonight is, you know, specific. It'll be more general and wide ranging at the retreat.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you Caroline and Dave for doing this and for, before I just, you know, forget for, for really doing the legwork to put this together. So thank you so much. I know this stuff takes time. And, and Dan, the sooner you can get your, those materials out, I know it's a work in progress. That, that's better for me to be able to pace myself and, and make sure I'm adequately prepared for Wednesday. Because I have other demands on my time. So I, I do a lot of my reading between 10 and midnight. And, and so I was just wondering in terms of the schedule, do we, and I'm trying to make sure I'm able to participate as long as possible. I thought we were going to end at three. So I arranged a parent teacher conference and at both conferences in the afternoon that I can't get rescheduled. So I'm wondering, do we need that hour and a half is there in the middle of the day? Cause I blocked out the whole day from, from my work. So they know that I'm taking the whole day off to do this retreat. Do we need that one hour and a half break or can we compress it a little bit so I can participate longer? Before I have to go to conferences?
I think Dan, that, that right now might be better for him and, and to understand what staff needs are at that point.
Yeah. I, I think having an, at, at least an hour lunch break would be super helpful for all of us. I, I guess I would turn to staff who, you know, probably has, I, I could circle back tomorrow afternoon with the main staff that I know are going to be part of that afternoon session and see if we could do some minor adjustments on that. So ending a half hour early, starting a half hour early in the afternoon type of thing.
Well, and can I also ask, just because I, I want to apologize if, if any of this is from myself or us not getting the information out properly. It was my understanding that we were going to take a pretty long midday gap just in order to help everyone with their day and breaks and, and other obligations. Was there something that, that we said, Michelle, that? Cause I guess my understanding was that it was, it was going to be a full day from the beginning with like a solid hour and a half or two hour break, but did, did, did I give you a communication breakdown or did, how did we mess that one up?
Well, I know that we talked about breaking it into two day, two days potentially. And then we also talked about consolidating it into one day. Understanding that people did have familial after school obligations. And so that's what I took away from the last discussion about this, that we were going to end around three o'clock. To accommodate those, including staff with, with, with kids who need to come home. And so, yeah, versus breaking it up into two days. And so pressing through it in one day was, was fine with me, but with the idea that we're going to end at three.
Was there, was there anyone else that somehow?
I don't know if it really matters, Caroline, like we need to deliberate that, but I'm just asking.
Are, you know, only once a year.
Can I, can I propose a solution? Is Michelle, is it possible that you can identify? Michelle, is it possible that you can identify? Sorry. Is it possible that you could identify a segment that is of the least amount of interest to you and we could swap it into the end slot?
I'm not really suggesting that we, we reorganize the agenda for myself. If we can shorten the lunch break, then, cause I'm, I'm going to have to tap out at 3:30, no later than 3:30. So if we were able to like shorten that break, then I could, I could participate longer.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do a quick poll tomorrow morning to see if that could happen, Michelle.
And Michelle, yeah, we're, we're sorry that, you know, that the timing is, is a little funky. What I was going to ask, I don't know.
What I was going to ask, I don't know.
You mute your computer. Thanks. So Michelle, I was going to ask on the parent teacher conferences, is it possible for you to do those and then jump back in to the meeting conversation?
Yes.
And I don't know how much time you would miss, but it strikes me that, you know, if it's a half an hour or so, that, that would be fine. And, you know, you would certainly be welcome to. And, you know, you would certainly be welcome to, to jump back in as soon as you could.
Yeah. I, I would attempt to do that, yes, without trying to be super disruptive.
And as a last option, if, if, if it doesn't work, if there's something you're not that interested in.
If it doesn't work and there's something.
Karen, we really need to unmute when you're not talking. It's, we are not able to function.
So I had understood and written down in my calendar that we were ending at 5:00. Is that the planned ending time?
That is the plan currently. As Dan said, we may be able to adjust the, the schedule so that we can end somewhat sooner and, and, and fit in more earlier on so that none of us actually have to miss more than we need to.
Great. If, if we can't, if we can't find it.
What is the time block? What is the time block that Michelle needs to be away? Could we, instead of breaking at midday, could we break around Michelle's time that she has to be away? What is that time block?
3:30, 3:30.
The staff needs to have lunch. Let's see what can be done about Dan's lunch. And then if that doesn't work, please, maybe Michelle, we can just rearrange what the last item of the day is for the one of least interest to you. And why don't we move forward that way? It seems like between those two options, we'll get where we need to go.
And that sounds fine, Hal. But I will say Caroline and I thought that, you know, the progression of the conversation would kind of move to a building ending, you know, in, in various items. But we can be flexible and we'll, we'll do what, what makes the most sense for everyone.
Okay. Great. We'll figure that out by email. Karen, this next topic, we're gonna open up for you, but we're having really serious technology issues with your computer. Is, you don't have a headset or earphones to put in? If, if not, I think what we need to do is we'll give you some space here to make a, a presentation. And then we're gonna just have to figure out how to work with this feedback issue.
Right.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a headset coming out.
She's just lighting a fire for smoke signals, Hal.
And I think it might help when Karen's speaking, if we all are muted too. I've noticed a little correlation there.
Is it from her delay that it's so bad tonight? Is it, is it just because she's having that lag?
Right.
Okay.
Are, are you ready, Karen?
And you know, actually.
I am ready. And I think, I think Leah has a slide to put up. And I'm ready to talk if you'll all mute. And we could do this without video as well to save bandwidth, if that helps.
I think Karen, what would help, I don't know, like what you're able to hear compared to. If you could immediately mute, I think that that is, the problem is when you're having a conversation, you're staying unmuted, and that's the problem. So just really, as soon as you're done talking, if someone's answering, if you have your finger on the trigger, I think that that'll probably help cut it down some.
I'll suggest actually, and Karen, if you stay on mute and use the spacebar on your keyboard when you're talking, that might even be optimal. That will take you off mute temporarily while the spacebar is down.
I'm gonna try that too, Hal. Karen, we're all waiting.
Okay. Would you please mute then, Dave? In the, in the September meeting, because of the background that I have with the previous planning processes and documents that we base our work on, I asked questions about the adaptive management actions that were presented in the information section of the board packet. And as background to starting this, I wanted to share with you two of those. One, from the visitor master plan of 2005, in the guiding principles of that document, it says that, that OSMP will implement an adaptive management approach that monitors visitor experience, visitor infrastructure and resource conditions, assesses the effectiveness of management actions and revises them based on new information gained from research and experience. And then in our master plan, which we just finished a couple of years ago, if you show a little bit lower down, Leah, a figure which shows the adaptive management process, which starts with confirming an approach with OSBT, providing existing guidance data and trends, then having analysts of desired conditions and indicators, four, exploring and evaluating alternatives, five, updating management guidance, and so forth around the circle. And it's with that background that I asked staff, if staff could explain their thinking about the item that's number, well, that's on page 14 of the September packet, how the two paragraphs that are provided there about the seasonal leash regulation meshes with adaptive management, since it was labeled an adaptive management action. And I believe at this point, Steve is going to, to answer that question that was posed at the September board meeting.
Sure, I can take it over. Thanks Karen for setting that up. And I think that it was also set up to recognize that a much deeper conversation around how the Voice Insight Tag Program, how we think about adaptive management. And there's various ways to look at it, how we really apply our thinking. We, we use the aspects that are, that cycle that Karen just put in, in relationship to a lot of projects, that that's kind of some of the depth of conversation we're gonna have at the retreat. But Leah, if you can bring up a couple of slides that I have that we can walk through to get to Karen's specific question. And I may just need everybody to kind of hark back to the wheel, the adaptive wheel that Karen just showed in, one of the last steps there is that, is part of the adaptive management process, you're in a get information, make adjustments in management process. And that's pretty much an iterative process while you're kind of figuring out and adapting what is working on the ground, tweaking what perhaps, you know, can it have better results if you make some adjustments? And to use some data that you're getting and in essence, some different efforts to see what has most efficacy. So in, in that light, with the staff up, the information we provided, we did mention that one of the things that we identified, and this was kind of clear from some of the monitor, the monitoring results that we most recently completed with the Voice Insight Tag Program, is that with regards to the compliance related to seasonal leash restrictions in the fall for bears, there's also seasonal leash restrictions in the spring and early summer for ground nesting birds. But our compliance rates for that were, you know, substantially lower than the proposed compliance. And these are probably dog, broader dog control requirement, proposed standards in the visitor master plan. So the guidance from the visitor master plan is we wanted to be kind of, you know, you know, an overall 90% ish compliance status, where the results we were getting from our compliance monitoring for those seasonal leash was down in the 56% category. So that was an indication again to staff, just from data we were getting in, that that could be a problem area that we wanted to go to work on. So Leah, if you wanna go to the next slide. So in part of that iterative process where we're getting results, we're trying to take some management actions to address areas where there may be, you know, some of the concerns that we want to try to improve conditions out on our system. In this case, compliance with those seasonal leash requirements, that we want to make sure we're taking actions and doing things that are, at that point in that iterative process within the policy guidance, within those broader kind of either approved guides that we have through council and, and with board input, that we've gone through public planning process to help establish. But it's the range of kind of operational management that was within policy that staff can take actions on. In this case, it's the guidance that was established through the enhancements to the tag program that were approved in 2015. So over in the yellow box on the right, kind of just identify some of those categories that are those places we can go to work on in kind of this iterative way to adaptively manage and try to find some ways that we can continue to improve the efficacy of the Voice and Sight Tag Program. So in relationship to the signs, you know, we were certainly looking at, or relationship to the seasonal leash, we're looking at some of these tools that we could improve the efficacy, that we weren't necessarily looking at broader resetting either policy guidance, looking at adjusting standards or ways we may trigger broader management actions or change program requirements around the Voice and Sight Tag Program, or even talk more broadly about regulatory changes. So those are things that kind of outside the scope of where we were working within that adaptive process. Leah, the next slide, please. So in regards more specifically to the signs, is with that lower level of compliance, we have this fall season coming up with the application of those leash restrictions. And so one of the ideas that staff wanted to implement was just our practical knowledge and our observations that when we put kind of these larger temporary signs, what we call our sinekates, out on our system and the board, you know, when we did our tour out to the Anemone, we saw several of those at play advising people about the trail work that was happening up in Anemone and the closures. We find them to be quite effective to call attention to certain actions or management actions that staff's doing. In this case, we were thinking they'd be quite effective or more effective to call attention to the need for recognition of the importance of these seasonal leash restrictions out on the trails that do fall under our seasonal closures for bears. And so we placed those out, knowing that, you know, they, these temporary signs, they're larger. They have kind of the most critical information front and center for staff or for the public. And hopefully will garner a little bit more attention. And while there are permanent signs there, we also know because they are permanent, sometimes maybe something that, you know, visitor going by just tends not to pay as careful attention to, even though we want to, and it is important that they do pay attention. So from a kind of an adaptive action, it was an attempt to try to recognize that we had a compliance level that we weren't achieving kind of where we wanted to be and that we needed to continue to take some kind of actions to see what we could do to drive up or hopefully improve compliance. And it was just recognition that this is one of, you know, a range of different actions that could be taken and one that we did employ this fall. So Karen, I hopefully, that gives you a little bit more background as to kind of the why and that it really fits within just a small iterative process of one of the steps of the many steps within kind of the broader adaptive management process.
Karen, can I ask a clarifying question? I'll, I'll just go, go ahead quickly.
Sure.
On, on page 18 of the packet for this evening, there, this is in the cost analysis area. You are discussing in your response monitoring. And on page 18, where we list the response, where we risk, list the expenses related to the Voice and Sight Tag Program, I, I noticed reading this the other day, that there's wild volatility in expense of monitoring compared to the steady growth in customer service, for example. So number one, I'm wondering, what is the volatility in monitoring? And number two is, given that volatility, it explains almost all of the slight profitability shown under this program. And so when, when you say monitoring, help us understand what's going on in the world of monitoring.
So Hal, I can explain a little bit the volatility in the pulses, the pulses of expense you see is that when we kind of scheduled out the Voice and Sight Tag monitoring, it was done at certain cycles. So we did a baseline year before we implemented changes, a year after we implemented the enhancements, and then three years later. And to actually do the monitoring, you have about a year-long cycle where you have staff out on the system doing the observations. So that expense is highest when we're actually accounting for the staff time going out in the field, doing the actual observation and subsequent analysis work. But then when you're in between those monitoring cycles, we don't have as much staff time dedicated to the monitoring. So that, that's why certain years would have a much lower expense related to the monitoring itself.
Okay. And the monitoring includes no enforcement, so we don't count any enforcement cost against this program?
That's correct. Yeah. We look at, in general, the Rangers are doing many faceted contacts and serving many programmatic needs in their, you know, patrol across the system. So they may be talking to someone who has a dog, you know, question or a dog issue, but at the same time, they'd be talking about, you know, other aspects, other programmatic issues that we're also addressing.
Okay. I, I'll just say as my comment after the questions, that it simplistically occurs to me that if we're experiencing non, we're not meeting our goals in a particular area, that adjustments to both monitoring and enforcement would have to be made and that there would fundamentally be cost increases associated with the program.
I would agree with that, Hal. And the other thing that I would like to see is a clear statement of the objective. What's implied in the September information item is that the effort is to quote, increase awareness. And I think Steve, on one of your slides, you had those words. What I understood from your statement, however, is that what you're trying to do is increase compliance. So it would be helpful for the board and the public to know what your objective really is. Are you trying to increase awareness or are you trying to increase compliance? And then I would second the statements that Hal just made about the need to do some follow-up monitoring to see whether the objective had been met and some enforcement also.
I may have lost Karen's last point there. But I think to answer part of the question, I think Karen, we are creating a link Karen, between increasing kind of awareness is one way we feel we can increase compliance. So that we do know that again, that individuals, visitors out on our system, for whatever reason, may not pay attention, may misassign with a shifting requirement where you're on a Voice and Sight Trail, where on a trail that is, at other points of the year, allows Voice and Sight and then switches it for a certain timeframe. And even though we would love people to always read and pay careful attentions to signs, that that may be something that slips by the person's experience as they continue to walk that trail, perhaps on a regular basis. So the intent of those temporary signs is to kind of capture the attention of a visitor crossing that point to make sure they're aware of two things. One, that there is, is a requirement at that timeframe, that dogs be on leash, which would at other times frame be Voice, Voice and Sight. But also to make sure there's better awareness of the why, that this is important. We understand too, we've had conversations with the board, that sometimes indicating the importance is another way to help improve behavior or improve the compliance. So I think we are trying to create a connection there with the goal ultimately of trying to improve compliance. There could be other ways too, we might. There could be other ways too, we might look to improve compliance. To go to the point around monitoring in the broader cycle is, this is a place where, yes, we can get back to the conversation in a much broader sense of where do we put, where's the right areas to emphasize what are, you know, expensive endeavors to do when we focus monitoring time on trying to understand, create more specific data around specific management actions? Is this the right place for us to use those limited staff, you know, time and the funding we have to answer the right questions that inform management actions? And I think those are some of the questions we need to get to when we do have a little bit broader conversation around the Voice and Sight Tag Program. And maybe we, through that, we do say, okay, monitoring the compliance around the seasonal leash is one of the most important areas for us to dedicate those resources because we can't answer and provide data on all the questions we might have. But for this point, our observations are basically what we're relying upon to help indicate, give some indication, are we having a little more efficacy? So, Hal.
A little just response to that, Steve. I think it's a real blessing in that we have a cost recovery pricing methodology, that if we're not meeting targets, we can actually buy new staff time. And we know how we would raise those funds in order to get the results that are desired. And as a potential encouraging tool, I think a message to the community that says we haven't been achieving the compliance goals we set. Therefore, the cost of the program is rising as, because meeting those goals is what we're going to do. And we will readaptively reduce fees as compliance levels rise. And then you have real stakeholders in the program. That's how these things link together in my mind.
I think there's a connection there, and you're right, that's one of the, you know, aspects of the Tag, Voice and Sight Tag Program, is that it does generate funds, and part of those funds do connect directly into the monitoring. Absolutely. Michelle?
Well, and as I said before, you don't, you don't find out whether you've changed any awareness or compliance unless you do some monitoring.
We don't have, what I'd say is kind of objective data around it, Karen. We do have, through the Ranger Patrol out on the system, ability to have, you know, conditions or staff observations. But you're right, that it's not to the same scale, or I think the same objectivity that we can apply when we actually do monitoring that is, you know, based upon a sampling and is going to help give us a better kind of better assessment of what's happening.
Steve, I appreciate that, that you are investing efforts in increasing awareness and with the idea that that will lead to higher compliance. A couple of suggestions, I love that your signs blend into the natural environment. I think that people, because it blends in so well, it just is not as obvious to some folks that, man, it's now August, you know, on August 14th, there wasn't a restriction. It's now August 15th, and there is a restriction. This is something I need to pay attention to because it stands out to me. In terms of, you know, just ideas to increase the awareness, you know, in, like, I've seen it at Davidson Mesa, they have these little snazzy little signs on the trails that say there is no poop fairy. And they catch your attention, and they're all along the trail. And I know it's not as beautiful to see, but you can't miss them. And then there is, I've seen it, I think, as at Walker Ranch, where they have the a, like a wooden thing where they actually hang leashes up. And you're like, wow, what is this? Oh, it's a leash, it's time to put the dog on a leash, just to grab people's attention to increase awareness, because they are really beautiful signs, but I think that they can be easily missed.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Those are some good ideas, and I think the range of kind of thinking we have to apply over time too is even one thing we try one year, you know, we may need to always be thinking, try something else another year too, just to try to continue to, what we can do to trigger awareness. And you're right, it's sometimes those temporary signs, sometimes, you know, something creative sign-wise can help drive some attention to it.
Right, and the tools are also adaptive, right, that you try different tools?
That's exactly it.
Caroline?
Yeah, just another suggestion, when Michelle was talking, it popped into my head that I, you know, always get texts for muddy trail closures. So I don't know how easy it would be to set up a service for Voice and Sight for something similar, if that would be done, and, you know, you could send out links for surveys and things like that along with that. I don't know if that would be a good idea or cost-effective, but it just hit my mind because I get the muddy trail closures.
No, thanks, Caroline, as well. And I think one of the other kind of actions we did point out in that information write-up was that we've increased the use of sending emails out to the tag program participants for reminders or notification of certain events. So this is, again, kind of to the text point, those emails are going to our target audience, which is those individuals who are out on our system with Voice and Sight, you know, pet dogs potentially. So that's the right audience to make sure we're getting these reminders going out to them. And, you know, when it comes, hey, there's this time of year, we're trying to be attentive around these fall bear leash restrictions. So please be extra mindful, watch for the signs, know where you're going. So that's another thing we're trying to be more targeted and hopefully, again, get the awareness up, so we might in fact see improvements then in the compliance side.
In keeping with the suggestions that Michelle and Caroline have made, on a federal agency research webinar about users and how to affect user behavior, we heard about research that's been done that shows that much more effective than signs is having real people with the message. And so I would encourage looking into having some of the trail guides trained to convey the message in person as real people volunteers at some of these sites too, to see if that increases compliance, if we're really serious about using adaptive management and getting to the goal of better 90% compliance, which is a big jump and is going to require, in my mind, extraordinary measures to act.
Fully understand what you're saying, Karen, there, and I think we get that too, that sometimes the best efficacy we have is when there's a, you know, a person contacting another person and can actually relate to that specific situation and kind of connect more of the why through that. So, you know, I'll certainly pass that along. I think we think about that. That's certainly one of the reasons, again, we have Rangers and outreach staff, and we have volunteers across our system, and we can think about how to target that. It also relates to just one of the things I know where Lisa Gonzalo is thinking about and trying to move progress forward towards the, you know, it's under the umbrella of Voice and Sight Tag Program too, is working on a volunteer dog ambassador program. So that could be one of those future things, again, something that those volunteers, that's an area for them to go out and help us increase the awareness and education around as well.
I love that idea, and if you can involve kids in that ambassador program, that volunteer program, that would be really fun.
Doesn't get any better than kids and dogs, right?
Totally, totally.
I very much agree with all that. I appreciate it. I hope we do keep on the table the idea that if we need to hire people to do this work, we have a facility in cost recovery to do so. And that hiring is always a little easier than volunteer gathering.
I hear that clearly. Thanks, Hal.
Anybody else on this issue? Karen, is there anything, I know we're going to link this out in the retreat, anything else for this evening here? I saw, no. Okay, so I guess we are going to pick this conversation back up in the retreat, dig more into adaptive management. I certainly encourage everybody, there's going to be discussion of the Department of Interiors' approach to adaptive management, which you find in this packet this evening. Good thing to just brush up on in that homework category. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order this evening? I will mention that for folks here and also the public, the written information in tonight's packet relates to the fees that are collected in special activities and permits throughout the system, kind of interesting to see, provides a good overview of that. Anyone else with any final notes? Okay, again, seeing that, I think we are ready to adjourn this open space board trustees meeting at 10:41 PM, and send people off to a great night, and hopefully some nice time outside tomorrow.
All right, thanks all. Karen, can I come over and work on your wifi?